Today is March 18th at 7:00 PM. This is a Goffstown School Board meeting. Would you all please rise and join Mrs. Moore in the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the soil of liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this evening with election of officers. I'd like to congratulate our new school board member and welcome Tim Stetson to the table and welcome back some of our veteran members. We're glad to have you all back here. So I'd like to begin by asking if there are any nominations for Chair. Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Dutton. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Those in support of the nomination of Mr. Dutton as Chair, please signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm glad you said hi.
I hope for myself, so that everyone knows who I am. Happy to hand the meeting back over to you. All right, now, nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Reta.
Nominating for Reta, any other nominations? All right. All right, also, the Chair of the Board, please say hi. There's two public comments. Any public comment today? Sina, we'll move on to approval of the February 18th Board Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second one. Anybody have any suggestions? Uh, Sina, please.
Hi.
Who's standing? Great. First one, let's play first. Um, we have a few things. The first one I'd like to share with the Board, I think you all received an email from a, um, a community member who had proposed a different drop-off and pickup model at Maple Lab School. Um, Maple Lab pickup and drop-off is pretty complicated and I think we've all gone through this. We went through a pretty comprehensive process about two years ago where we interviewed the Highway Safety Committee and the Goffstown Police Department did a traffic study. Um, we ended up doing a trial period, but what I would like to do, first of all, I'd like to recognize and thank the community member. It's Catherine Shea. She put a lot of time and thought into this and really has good ideas. Um, if the Board is in concurrence, I'd like to send this on to the Highway Safety Committee because the Police Department was so intimately involved. I think it makes sense for that to be where this proposal should go. So I think you all probably received that and given an email or, let's make sure we get Owen a copy of that. And, okay, listen, it could be a hard copy, um, self-help email in your packet. But, um, again, thank you to Catherine for putting the time and effort into this and if the Board's in agreement, I'll pass this along to the Highway Safety Committee.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some organization over there before the committee.
It's not this. It's not this.
You can do something.
And, um, just a few other things in the Correspondence folder. We have a thank you letter from the Liberty House that were thanking us for a, um, donation made here from the high school for the Homeless Veterans Foundation, um, facility. There's a copy of a memo that I had referenced to the Board at one point in the past and, um, there's a copy in here. I'd like you to take a look if you would of a memo that I sent to Goffstown High School that asks a series of questions about equity and looking at the experience of all of our kids that's in here. And we do have the letters that Mr. Farley will be speaking to from the, um, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is our final report here at the high school. And lastly, we had a first grade lesson that we included that was something from our social media feed from a lesson at Bartlett. Okay, thanks, Brian. Thank you. Combinations, good news. Who wants to start?
Um, last week, the high schoolers and student ambassadors hosted the eighth graders for tours around the high school and that went really well, from what I've heard, especially from my sisters in eighth grader. It allowed them to get acclimated with the school and I thought that was great for all the incoming students. And in addition, Goffstown, uh, GHS in particular, had their semi-formal dance last Friday and from all I've heard from people who went, it went really smoothly. So I'd like to congratulate Peer Outreach and everyone who was a part of that for making it run so well.
So next Wednesday is SAT Day here for the juniors and so the school is definitely gearing up. Most teachers are focusing on doing SAT questions and getting the juniors really ready for a successful day next Wednesday. Um, so spring sports are gearing up and we had two of our talented art students that received state awards and I appreciate what the art department does as far as sharing the talent of our students with the community, making us available to see the artwork that they do.
And in fact, if you didn't see when you came in this evening, check it out on your way out this evening, the, the work that's out there from our talented kids is remarkable and it's really a great representation of many different styles and different mediums that the students have used. So if you take a look out here, it's just a snapshot and, and congratulations, I know it was, um, um, Georgia Schill.
Yes.
And the other one.
Caroline Cullis.
Caroline. And so her, the piece that Caroline won on is actually, um, out there. It's, it's pretty neat, so very cool to see. Great. Anyone have anything else? Jenny?
Yes, um, after our CE meeting, our last meeting, um, we learned about how much Chinese is going to be in Bartlett School. So I'd like to give a commendation for the program and the students that are volunteering really a lot of time, um, to our community and to Jerry who takes the time to set all that up. It's not easy to coordinate all of those and, um, she was inundated at one point with a bunch of students, um, double the number that usually come and she was able to, you know, get right on it and finding places for everybody. Um, I, I personally appreciate an administrator that welcomes people into the schools, volunteer. So, um, give my hat off to her for making that work and for the students to get their time, um, to our community. And also, um, in that we had to cancel our last meeting and didn't get to say it while Diane was here, um, just kudos to her for all of the years of fantastic work that she did on the, the school board. She really was a hard worker and, um, and did good things for us, so, um, good luck to her in the future and thank her for all she did.
I, I may have, um, left the door open with Mrs. McCarthy. I saw her on Election Day and she, she looked a little sad to me and I said, "Well, you know, maybe next year, maybe the year after." You know, you, you've got a home here, um, with us and on, and on the Board and, and certainly Diane, like, like all of you, gives so much time and gives so freely of your talents to the community. It's just, um, I don't think people really truly understand how much of a commitment it is and now that Tim's already sworn in, we can't.
We can swear.
We can't. No going back now. Yeah, no going back now. But, um, yeah, definitely. Well said. Better.
Um, I also had the opportunity to attend the eighth grade orientation and I'd just like to recognize all of the staff that were there. They gave an amazing presentation for parents, um, along with the ambassadors. All of the parents had great questions, so, um, they really represented the school well. And I, I think the students especially gave a perspective that maybe the parents weren't ready to hear, like, "Let your children go and don't compromise." So I thought that was a really great introduction.
Well, I was, I'm a, I'm an eighth grader, so I was at the parent night and the, uh, the staff administrators, it was amazing. And my son did the tour and he loved it, so kudos to everybody putting that together. Joyce Lewis has been helping us figure out stuff and so everybody's been really helping the transition, so.
That's great. Anybody else? All right, that brings us to projects discussion. First, we have, uh, safety projects approvals? Yeah, and actually, perfect timing, just as Tracy Ulet just walked in. Um, the Board will recall, as part of the procedures through the Department of Ed for the New Hampshire Public School Infrastructure Grants that we received, um, several hundred thousand dollars worth of projects. I think the number, Scott, ended up being close to half a million that we received from the state through this process, but we have to sign off. I think, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the end of the project?
Almost the end.
Almost the end.
Bartlett still, we had an extension on Bartlett.
Okay, so we have one more piece after this?
One little, little piece.
But so can you just, um, preface what folks are going to be signing and Tracy will be notarizing?
Sure. So, like any good government program, it requires a lot of signatures and have to be notarized. So we have four projects that have been completed due to the, uh, Public School Infrastructure Fund and I'll just go over the four. One of them was the Glen Lake School Combine Locks. That project, uh, had a total cost of $1,971. Our district cost was 20% of that, $394.20 and the state picked up $1,576.80. The next one was a Goffstown High School overhead, uh, door security. That one was about $10,000 and I'm not going to read through the numbers, but again, an 80/20 split. Uh, Mountain View Alarm System upgrades, the total cost for that one was approximately $8,600. And then the biggest one was a district-wide digital video security system upgrade. The total cost of that project was $285,000 and, uh, on that one, our share was $57,000 and change and the state picked up almost $228,000. So in total, Brian, uh, it was $305,817.62. Uh, that, in total projects, Goffstown contributed $61,163.52 and the state, uh, state share was $244,654.10. So, um, talking about commendations and good news, uh, Gary Girallaman deserves a big, big pat on the back for submitting these, uh, applications. Laura Taylor has been instrumental in the business office of administering the accounting side of it. Um, so, you know, our schools obviously are, are safer because of that, so we're very grateful to have these, these state grants and just also very grateful to have employees who put forth the effort to secure them, um, on the district's behalf. So with that, Tracy is here. Tracy Ulet is from, she's our HR guru in the SAU office and she's also a notary and she has to notarize these four packets. So I'm just going to show you the first one. Uh, the Superintendent of Schools will sign the top page on each one. I will sign to the right of that and then there's a space for school board members. You'll also see another spot, uh, for the Chair to sign on the second page of each one and then Brian, on the fourth page, you have to sign again for it says Superintendent of Schools and then we're, Tracy signs it and we're all, we're good. We've complied and.
We're good shape. So.
Are you sending that around? Do we have to go to her?
We're going to do this all right now.
Okay.
And then I'm going to, uh, zip it up, lock it up, make sure it's all secured and then deliver it tomorrow. So I'm going to start the process. Is technically Tracy supposed to watch us as we sign this?
See, she's coming over. She's watching.
Watch your step.
Watch, there's a big one that I may or may not.
And there are four originals. Right? Scott?
Yes, there are four packets that are coming around.
Oh, and they're all the same.
They're all, they all look kind of the same, yes. You're just worrying, look, the school board members are just worrying about the first top sheet.
Yes.
Do you know who he is?
Steve, if you could give me email.
Yes.
Okay. If you could just give us clarity.
Yep.
Give me clarity at some point. Thank you.
Do we have a musical interlude or something?
Those would like to hear.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy, don't get it.
I heard the same. Brian likes the Grateful Dead.
I, I do enjoy a good Christmas carol. Just don't. Just, just no.
I sing the wheels on the bus to my granddaughters.
The wheels on the bus, Rudy, that's a good one. Rock style.
Baby shark's always going off in my.
Baby shark. Baby shark, yeah.
So mean.
Now try to get that one out of you.
Making a lot of money on YouTube.
I never heard the video.
Amazing, a little quickly.
My granddaughter, that's all we came to leave at the house.
I have, um, my twins are four years old and my daughter is going to be two.
This was what's happening. She's right in the prime.
Police Patrol's big in life.
And we can't say. I thought I had control of that. I was like, "I control Alexa." And then they're like, "I didn't know that."
Police Patrol's big in life with my granddaughters.
They learn from my grand.
Peppa Pig.
This is the chair.
This is six and seven.
Yeah, she's only 22. And awesome rainbows is another one that my, my kids are watching. I think Glen Lake for that one.
I haven't heard that one.
It's cute.
Yeah.
It's shorter in duration.
My daughter sings hippie, hippie dippies on the swing. Hippie dippies, school. Peace on earth and quality to all.
Not a bad concept.
Yes.
Do we have a rolling camera? We, we don't. And I'll, I'll preface that in when we talk about this.
I said the same exact thing.
Tracy, do you need anything else from any of us?
Um, I have to talk to, to Stetson for me.
Dun, dun, dun.
Aren't you in trouble?
No, we're sorry.
20 minutes and you're in trouble.
Whoever does this has to be, uh, bad. He's the only guy.
I just say fix it. Do we really have to go? Just fix it.
I have my wheelchair.
I just need a blanket. Look at all the ink and paper that's wasted. Oh, my gosh, this is breaking my heart.
Lot of swearing. Lot of swearing.
It's that kind of work.
Shall we continue?
Yes.
Do you want to wait for Tim?
I want asbestos. Still fix it.
Well, we can always add to the, uh, good news.
So much of this.
There were four items on the ballot and all four passed. That's good news. Yep, absolutely.
This is very comprehensive.
These are sizable tiles. What are they, 18-inch squares? Those are 12 by 12. 12-inch squares? And some of the areas are nine by nine. Smaller. And.
The nine by nine is fucking.
And underneath the 12 by 12 is nine by nine tile. We just put another rule of 18 by 18.
There you go. That makes sense.
Sooner or later, we're going to, we're going to hit the weight limit. Wow. I don't know if we've got the screen down. Yeah. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, so next, next on our agenda, we're going to do something that's, um, a little outside the norm, but we're actually going to take a walk, but before we do, we're going to provide some background information. Mr. Loring is here along with, uh, Dawn Tabor and we're going to be looking at flooring in different sections of the high school. So what we've seen is, um, and I'll let Mr. Loring give kind of the full introduction, but we've seen over the last year, a pretty significant, um, deterioration and failing of many areas of the flooring here at the high school. The condition has been fair for quite some time, but what, what our, uh, maintenance and facility staff have seen in the last year is the flooring has really gotten considerably worse and worse and we now have a number of areas that are significant trip hazards within the school. We have areas that the tile is damaged and the handout that you have that Randy will walk you through, we go through and identify what are 12 by 12 tiles which are an overlay that went over asbestos tile. So in 2002, we had a massive renovation project that occurred here at this high school and the determination was made at that time that there were asbestos-containing tiles that were in the front section of the building, this 100 wing is what we call this, that was, um, abated and removed. Other areas of the building, the asbestos tile was left as is and just has floor wax on top of it and then other sections of the building, uh, 12 by 12 tiles were put over the asbestos tile. Um, so Randy, with that as kind of an intro, why don't you walk us through your materials?
So on the first page of the handout, we'll see a wall frame of the 300 and 400 inches and we'll see dark circles and a number of areas throughout those spaces and those areas where they put a 12 by 12 BCT tile over the top of nine by nine tile. And then the ones with just X's are just straight nine by nine tiles. And really what we've seen over the last few years is a significant curling in the 12 by 12 tiles that was adhered to the nine by nine tiles underneath it. And we have been encapsulating it with the floor finish, uh, and actually doing it a couple of times as, as, uh, over the, the course of the year to make sure that it stayed encapsulated and the tile stayed down. But what we're finding too is that the tile has such a curl on it that you know, as you walk on it and you're stepping on those edges and a curl, it's actually causing a number of tiles to lift with it. Uh, underneath it, it's the adhering backing is a mastic on top of a nine by nine tile that, it's just like painting, if you don't have something for that mastic to hang on to, this is what will happen over, over time. It's been 17 years since these tiles have been put down and there is real no substance other than the nine by nine tile that's underneath it, uh, because you, at the time that this overlay was done, I would have to say the decision was made not to go in and run machinery over the top of the nine by nine tile because it would have incurred doing more abatement than I think that they wanted to do in 2002. So they basically cleaned it, put mastic down, put 12 by 12 over the top of it and here it is now, like I said, 17 years later, the tile is curling, uh, and we, as I said, the finish going on and people just, the amount of people walking over the top of it is causing some of what we're seeing is, is the delamination from the nine by nine tiles and some of it is, as, as we have talked extensively about this and talked with a number of abaters, uh, in the area that at first we said, "Well, maybe we can just get the 12 by 12 tile up and not have to abate and just re-overlay again." And again, and it was consistent across, uh, talking with a number of contractors and abaters that there was no guarantee that once they went in and started popping the tiles that the nine by nine would lift right with it. So it only made sense to abate and take the asbestos tile out. So if down the road we ever had any other future issues, our own maintenance. Any idea of what the cost? We have some rough numbers that we can talk about. And what we would, you know, any project of this nature, we would typically obviously put it out to bid. This is a little unique in that because the state has already gone through a competitive bid process and have identified the contractor that they selected as the asbestos abatement overseeing, and then the company to actually do the abatement, that's a little different because the state has already selected those vendors. But certainly for relaying tile as well, that would all go out to bid. Right, okay. So everything would be done through a competitive bid process. The thing that we really like about the state contractors is they have gone through a very comprehensive process. And this, these are the vendors that the state of New Hampshire selected. So those vendors have already been prescreened, so to speak. Brandon?
Seeing how this is a majority of the school that would have tiles replaced, how long would this be likely to take?
Well, so one of the things that, in order to be able to give the board some options to consider, I asked Randy to reach out to the state contractors and look at what kind of a timeline, if it's even possible, if we could look at a summer-type project. And you were on the phone with them.
As early as, just before coming over here chatting with them, that they do, they, if, and again, and they're starting to book up their summer schedules too, but they've committed that if we want to move forward to this, that they can lock in the time and make it happen for us over the summer. That would be, we would take the last week of June as also part of this, is we called manpower for labor resources to come and empty two wings of furniture and putting it designated into an area where we're gonna put it, to open up the space for these folks to come into. So I've been on the phone dealing with those folks as well, as well as the overseer and the abater. And they're saying, you know, you've gotta make a decision what you want to do because we are booking them.
Scott?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the questions that I often get is, well, how come we, you know, we didn't know? And I just want to offer you my own personal experience. So my first day on the job, Brian took me around to all the schools and we did a walkthrough. And at that time, you know, you could see that some classrooms in a couple of the hallways, they, I would say they were in fair condition. I would say there might have been one or two classrooms that I would have said were poor. And then about, I don't know, it was like three months ago, I walked around and it was, it didn't, it looked worse. And then I walked around like two weeks ago and it looked worse. And I don't, again, I'm not a flooring contractor. So whether or not, you know, the tiles are compromised and then we wash them and then water's getting underneath and they're lifting, I don't know. But what I do know is that having walked through this facility in July of last year, and then just most recently, the decline is, it's happening rapidly. And I think, I think it would be incumbent upon us to make sure that we address this. I don't, in my opinion, it's not, I don't even think, I am very confident that we cannot let this wait another year and three months. It will be in extremely, extremely poor condition. And you'll see some of these classrooms, I mean, the tiles, as you walk, they're moving with your feet. So that is, that's really the impetus, you know, behind this. If it could wait, trust me, I think we should wait if it could wait. But I don't, I don't think that the degree of deterioration, the speed which is happening, it can wait. And I think you'll see that when you take a look.
Jared?
So, just doing an active listening piece, we're saying that we're looking at the 300 and 400 wings. And it would be from a replacement standpoint. And your recommendation is to use the 3.5 contingency?
2.5.
2.5, thank you. Do we have the contract, the state contractor coming in to actually do an assessment of the floors as part of this process?
It will be, yes. But right now, it was, it was to act on it to meet with the folks that I knew had the state contract award. I spoke with them. We gave them the square footage and understanding what was not coming out of the room, what was staying in the room, that there were items that they would be working on, plumbing, heating fixtures, islands like in the science labs and on the, in some of the science labs, the heating and electric were down the side on the counters, that they would be cutting up to those. And actually, the counters and those big fixtures that are non-movable, we're gonna leave the tiles under that and going, everything out on the surface where everyone can walk.
So they were actually onsite reviewing this?
I know, I had spoke with them, but they have not been onsite yet.
So when do we anticipate? He's already, he went and met with them. So he met with them offsite with the maps, with the square footage. So we would have
They would, they would be coming out. But I'm saying, but right now to get the ball rolling so we could come and have this conversation and speak logistics about what was happening, they understand what the project is because they work in a lot of school districts where it's similar type of working atmosphere and working conditions. So they understood exactly what I was saying, you know, there would be things that just, we're not gonna take out of the space that you're gonna have to work around. And they understood that because that's what they do is they work at schools.
So are we gonna have, if I can continue, are we gonna have that, somebody actually physically here before we actually do any kind of rational decision?
That would be correct.
Okay.
I just want to make one more disclosure, so knowing the timeframe here, this kind of, Jared, this kind of goes to your point. If this happens, it has to happen here in the summer. So I contacted the chairman of the budget committee, Mike Smith. They are going to meet here tomorrow and also do a walkthrough. And we're doing that to try to make sure that we're trying to expedite this, that this is where the board lands, that the budget committee, they only meet once a month, so that they will have done a walkthrough as well. So I just wanted to make that, make that known that I did ask Mike, so that there will be a budget committee meeting here tomorrow. And as part of their business, Dawn and Randy and myself and Mr. President will walk them around the school and show them exactly what you're seeing. Because we need their approval if we were to use the 2.5% contingency fund. If it goes that route, we have to lay out that groundwork just in case.
Ellen?
Brian, could you very quickly explain where the 2.5 emergency
I accept that there's an issue. I have no question about that. It does bother me that it hasn't been on CIP, but it's not. Our CRF fund was 200,000, of which about 100,000 we've already pledged to be doing other items. We went through the budget process and guaranteed them. And we wanted to develop that capital reserve fund for other items that we need to repair, replace, excuse me, that don't reach the threshold of, what is it, 25,000 for CIP? Of which, this should be quite a sizable list, I would think. I realize it's quite a process to go through the 3.5% emergency contingency fund funding. I don't know how much that is, that comes to, or how much is projects going to be. I would hate to put this off another year and a half. I mean, it's asbestos. And even if it weren't, these tiles aren't safe to be walking on and moving furniture on. What is the board's feeling about going with 3.5% emergency contingency fund, well, process, emergency fund?
So, that would be our recommendation, both Mr. Gross and myself. My concern is, if we don't address this in a fairly large-scale way, I don't know what the next 18 months of deterioration is going to look like. When we see something go from fair condition to poor condition as quickly as things have, I'm just fearful that another six or 12 months just continues to make this look worse and worse. In the fund now, Scott, how much do we have as our designated fund balance in the 2.5% contingency fund?
2.5%?
2.5.
Right now, we have $615,131 in the 2.5% fund.
So, our recommendation, when we take a walk, is, there are, this is going to be a multi-phased process. So, if we, we're going to take you upstairs and show you the two upstairs wings, which we would identify as the first level of doing this project. The section back on my left, this is the whole 200 wing. This wing also needs to be addressed. But it would be 100, 200, 300, 400. The 200 wing also needs to be done, but our recommendation is, you can only do so much, and we would need to pace this out and look at a several-phase-type approach to this.
Before we start talking around numbers, we should get some quotes back to it. Any idea of what the cost?
We have some rough numbers that we can talk about. And what we would, you know, any project of this nature, we would typically, obviously, put it out to bid. This is a little unique in that because the state has already gone through a competitive bid process and have identified the contractor that they selected as the asbestos abatement overseeing, and then the company to actually do the abatement. That's a little different, because the state has already selected those vendors. But certainly for relaying tile as well, that would all go out to bid.
Right, okay.
So, everything would be done through a competitive bid process. The thing that we really like about the state contractors is, they have gone through a very comprehensive process, and this, these are the vendors that the state of New Hampshire selected. So, those vendors have already been prescreened, so to speak.
Brandon?
Seeing how this is a majority of the school that would happen, it would have tiles replaced, how long would this be likely to take?
Well, so, one of the things that, in order to be able to give the board some options to consider, I asked Randy to reach out to the state contractors and look at what kind of a timeline, if it's even possible, if we could look at a summer-type project. And you were on the phone with them.
As early as, just before coming over here chatting with them, that they do, they, and again, and they're starting to book up their summer schedules too, but they've committed that, if we want to move forward to this, that they can lock in the time and make it happen for us over the summer. That would be, we would take the last week of June as also part of this, is we called manpower for labor resources to come and empty two wings of furniture and putting it designated into an area where we're going to put it, to open up the space for these folks to come into. So, I've been on the phone dealing with those folks as well, as well as the overseer and the abater, and they're saying, you know, you've got to make a decision what you want to do, because we are booking them.
Scott?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the questions that I often get is, well, how come we didn't know? And I just want to offer you my own personal experience. So, my first day on the job, Brian took me around to all the schools, and we did a walkthrough. And at that time, you could see that some classrooms and a couple of the hallways, they, I would say they were in fair condition. I would say, there might have been one or two classrooms that I would have said were poor. And then, about, I don't know, it was like three months ago, I walked around, and it was, it didn't, it looked worse. And then, I walked around like two weeks ago, and it looked worse. And I don't, again, I'm not a flooring contractor, so whether or not, you know, the tiles are compromised, and then we wash them, and then water's getting underneath, and they're lifting, I don't know. But what I do know is that, having walked through this facility in July of last year, and then, just most recently, the decline is, it's happening rapidly. And I think, I think it would be incumbent upon us to make sure that we address this. I don't, in my opinion, I don't even think, I am very confident that we cannot let this wait another year and three months. It will be in extremely, extremely poor condition. And you'll see some of these classrooms, I mean, the tiles, as you walk, they're moving with your feet. So, that is, that's really the impetus, you know, behind this. If it could wait, trust me, I think we should wait, if it could wait. But I don't, I don't think that the degree of deterioration, the speed which is happening, it can wait. And I think you'll see that when you take a look.
Jared?
So, just doing the active listening piece, we're saying that we're looking at the 300 and 400 wings, and it would be from a replacement standpoint. And your recommendation is to use the 3.5 contingency?
2.5.
2.5, thank you. Do we have the contract, the state contractor coming in to actually do an assessment of the floors as part of this process?
It will be, yes. But right now, it was, it was to act on it, to meet with the folks that I knew had the state contract award, and spoke with them. We gave them this, the square footage, and understanding what was not coming out of the room, what was staying in the room, that there were items that they would be working on, plumbing, heating fixtures, islands like in the, in the science labs, and on the, in some of the science labs, the heating and electric were down the side on the counters, that they would be cutting up to those, and actually, the counters and those big fixtures that are non-movable, we're going to leave the tiles under that, and going, everything out on the surface where everyone can walk.
So, they were actually onsite reviewing this?
I know, I had spoke with them, but they have not been onsite yet.
So, when do we anticipate?
He's already, he went and met with them, so he met with them offsite with the maps, with the square footage. So, we would have...
They would, they would be coming out. But I'm saying, but right now, to get the ball rolling, so we could come and have this conversation and speak logistics about what was happening, they understand what the project is, because they work in a lot of school districts where it's similar type of working atmosphere, and working conditions, so they understood exactly what I was saying, you know, there would be things that just, we're not going to take out of the space that you're going to have to work around. And they understood that, because that's what they do, is they work at schools.
So, are we going to have, if I can continue, are we going to have that, somebody actually, physically here, before we actually do any kind of rational decision?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make one more disclosure, so, knowing the timeframe here, this kind of, Jared, this kind of goes to your point, if this happens, it has to happen during the summer, so, I contacted the chairman of the budget committee, Mike Smith. They are going to meet here tomorrow, and also do a walkthrough. And we're doing that to try to make sure that, we're trying to expedite this, that this is where the board lands, that the budget committee, they only meet once a month, so that they will have done a walkthrough as well. So, I just wanted to make that, make that known, that I did ask Mike, so that there will be a budget committee meeting here tomorrow, and as part of their business, Dawn and Randy and myself and Superintendent will walk them around the school and show them exactly what you're seeing. Because we need their approval, if we were to use the 2.5% contingency fund, if it goes that route, but we have to lay out that groundwork, just in case.
Ellen?
Brian, could you very quickly explain where the 2.5 emergency fund comes from?
Sure.
And how it's calculated?
Sure. So, there was a state law change about six years ago, I think it was, where the local municipalities were allowed to vote on the creation of a 2.5% contingency fund. Goffstown was one of the first communities to put this in front of the voters. The voters in Goffstown supported the creation of the fund. We can retain 2.5% of the net assessment that we raised through taxation. So, just make sure that makes sense to folks. However much money we raise from taxation, we're able to retain 2.5% of that money in a, the board has to vote on it every year, and we retain that money in our bank account as a designated fund balance.
Then, how does that impact using, I know all these words, but terms, on reserve fund balance to fill in this year, in coming year, this CRF?
I can...
How does...
So, yeah, first of all, the money is already in the bank for the 2.5% contingency fund.
Okay.
So, the money for the capital reserve fund will be money that is unspent from the current fiscal year's budget that ends on June 30th. So, as of July 1st, Mr. Gross will make a deposit of $200,000 into the capital reserve fund that was newly created. That money is actually retained by the trustees of the trust fund. The 2.5% contingency fund money isn't retained by the trustees of the trust fund, it's retained on our local books, and it's identified as a designated fund balance through our audit process. So, the monies are separate, they're, they're not commingled or...
Where does the money come from? It's a percent of the amount raised through taxation?
The money comes from fund balance at the end of the year.
No, I mean, for the emergency fund.
It comes from money that's left over at the end of the year. But the money that's in the bank this year was from previous, the previous year. So, let me, so, we already have this money in the savings account. The money for the, for the capital reserve fund will be identified as of June 30th, and that deposit will be made to the trustees of the trust fund.
It comes out of undesigned fund balance, the initial deposit, and then that gets returned into the fund. And then, if we vote, it's kind of like a swap every year. We had an interesting time as we retained $10 million that we probably shouldn't have retained. And so, what's happening now is that $10 million is offsetting the tax rate.
Yes, I understand that.
And so, the fund needs to go down.
Understand that.
Anyway. So, it's just undesigned fund balance. It's not raised, it's kind of raised by taxation, if you want to think about it that way.
615,131 dollars is already in the bank.
Yes. It's money that was not used to offset taxes. It was available to offset taxes, but it was not returned to offset taxes.
Out of that piece, out of that other...
Every year, yes.
And we've just been accumulating it?
You don't accumulate?
No. It doesn't accumulate?
It was a one, it was a one-year.
That's out of 10 million dollars.
Goes back out.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
In July 1st, it'll be at 400,000?
Yeah, it's less.
Right, 391, 125.
So, I'm going to address this one to Brian.
Brian, if we use money out of the contingency fund, and we needed to bring it back up to 2.5%, and Ellen, this is going off the question that you've had, that money would be from surplus funds that we have over at the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
And it wouldn't be raised through direct taxation to a line item?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, we've got a couple of different options. I think at this point, let's, let's take a walk. For any viewers at home, Broden is going to put up a graphic right now indicating that the video of the meeting is being paused. The board, I just want to be clear procedurally, the board is not recessing, the board is still in session, but we will not have the luxury of the video coming with us. We will return to the table, and then we'll go back live.
Mrs. Morn is going to take notes, that's what we want.
Live streaming with you.
Yeah.
Why not? She's good.
Let's go around with the phone, I haven't livestreamed.
Superintendent GoPro. Okay? Broden?
Yes, it was.
What were you thinking? How come we didn't debate the whole thing?
Why didn't we?
I don't know. Do you remember?
I am sure it was due to cost.
I'm sure it was.
Gee, go figure.
Well, I remember, I was telling Randy, we didn't do brick on the front because of cost.
Right. And that was, that was the renovation project, not the building.
Correct, right, right, right.
Because the building project...
There's been too many of those, I cannot remember things.
A little before your time.
Well, it was before my time, but it's too many projects.
It is, because I came in here the second year the school was opened, so...
As a student?
As a student, yeah. So, you didn't help build it.
You two need to behave yourselves there.
Does Steve need to get between them?
What fun is that, right?
Safer over here.
Hey, Richard is home, and Brian over here, can I say?
It happens every time you go on one of those things. You ever see one of those horror movies? It happens the same thing. They all go out for a walk in the woods, and only five return.
Like 500 steps. Should have kept going.
It was 500 steps?
Yeah, not much at all. I had it hit 6,000.
We lost Tim.
Tim just came in and then went back. He said he's coming back, so...
We're good, we're going.
Is that live?
Yeah.
So, since, since folks had to take the, had the chance to take the walk, any questions that we can have either Dawn or Randy answer?
Do you have an estimated cost per tile?
Per tile?
Well, we've got 21,000...
Square feet.
Square feet, oh, not tile, it's square feet.
Square footage.
So, it's all, so, normally, would we just throw up like, like a five bucks per square foot for installation, not remediation, or, do you have any estimates whatsoever?
The estimate that I, if we estimate it in total, in fact, we bring the contractors out so they can look to see what's ahead of them. We're looking at, they ballparked around 450 with oversight, abatement, and installation of tile. The installation of tile, we have that number.
Okay. So, the project?
The project.
And at this point, that would include a two-part process to remove the current overlay, the 12-by-12 tile, as well as the asbestos containing underneath. So, it's, there's a chemical process that they can use, and then there's also a mechanical process. Randy, can you speak to that?
This is a chemical process. They will go in with a machine, for lack of just a really heavy machine with a big flat blade on the front, that they'll scrave a line at the beginning and put the blade under it, and peel up the nine-by-nine tile and everything in one shot. Then, they go in with a chemical to remove the mastic or the, whatever the adhesive was, literally scraping it up. Then, when the overseer says, yeah, you've got it, they will neutralize the floor, which will prep the floor to receive tile.
Now, are we in an envelope of white sealed area, because this is not, because it's chemical, is it different?
Well, this is a, it's per, you know, the AHRa regulations to how they do containment. There is a containment, and that's what the oversight does. At the beginning, they come in to say, your containment field has a negative airflow, so it meets the, you know, the AHRa regulations for abatement. And this process is, the space will have a negative airflow, pulling air in from any of the areas that they can't seal, to contain this area of anything that would happen within it.
So, you said the process, we would actually be laying down the tile, I guess?
Contractor.
The contractor would be.
A contractor.
A contractor would be. And that would be included in that, that's right, that you gave for a rough order of magnitude? Okay.
And Randy, that would be replacing with new VCT tile?
Correct.
Brian, what color scheme are you going to go with if this is approved?
I'd follow, I'd follow the same color scheme that would, that's currently in the 100 wing, and the other 200 wings. There's a maroon, green, and kind of a white tile.
School colors, right?
He was waiting for the question.
I had a number of them already come in and take pictures, so they know the layout to where to put this.
Now, what action, if any, is needed from the board today, number one? And number two, when is the finality of this going to happen, so we can get it done over the summer?
So, let's talk about next steps. I think, in general, we were looking for at least a temperature read on the board, if this was a project that you'd like us to continue to explore, to hone the numbers in a little more carefully, and if we were to begin the process of going about using the 2.5% contingency fund, because there are, there are significant steps that we need to take to do that. Because the budget committee was already meeting tomorrow anyhow, Scott's idea of having them actually meet here, I thought was a really smart recommendation, so we'll plan to take the budget committee on the exact same walk. So, I guess I would say, any interested members of the community, if there were folks at home that wanted to see what we just saw, the meeting tomorrow is a public meeting, they could certainly come, and we could take them through the building tomorrow during that time. But that would be, the next step would be to let the budget committee know, if the school board is at least interested in further exploration of this, we would then meet with the budget committee, let them know sort of the scope of the project, go over some rough numbers, as Randy said, as we continue to get the numbers tighter and tighter, and then we would be at a point where we would be ready to go forward with the funding request through a public hearing, and then going to the commissioner.
Do you need a motion to that effect? For the direction to take?
If...
I'd be willing to make that motion, so it's official, that we move forward with what is needed to do, to apply for the 2.5, 2.5% emergency contingency funds, and do that process through this budget committee, state, and all that, and hopefully have this project being done this summer.
There's a motion by Ellen. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jenny. Any further discussion?
As part of this process, are we going to actually have the final manifest number to us that we'll vote on before we actually approve it?
Yes.
Go through?
Yes.
You're talking about the actual cost?
And Jared, it probably will be framed as a not-to-exceed-type cost amount. So, what we'll do is, we'll anticipate kind of a worst-case scenario, and then if rooms, so, for example, the process that Randy's explaining of how the tile is actually removed, it could go quicker, it could go longer, that will dictate costs, but we would probably come in with a number that was a not-to-exceed, and then we would manage the project on a room-by-room basis, and look at how the process actually goes, and update as we're going through the actual abatement process.
Janelle?
I was wondering if there was a list of other projects that are in queue before this gets done, because this is sort of a, thrown on our plate, and if there's anything else that maybe needs to be prioritized above this, before seeking out the funds for this specific project.
In terms of projects that we have right now, the board is aware we have the project that will be happening in June for the middle school partition walls, that's a significant one for safety purposes, because we had someone injured by that. I would say, this would be the next project in terms of order of importance. Now, obviously, if the middle school septic tank, septic system were to fail tomorrow, the list is going to change. But as of right now, this would be, I would say, the next highest-order need. We also are fortunate that when we went through the public school infrastructure grant money, the projects that we did, a number of those, for example, the, the new video security system, that was a better part of a $300,000 project, that was a CIP project. So, since we did that, that will now be removed from the CIP. And when we go through CIP, which we've already started meeting on, we'll be ready in May to get all of our materials submitted to the town, we'll have a new CIP matrix that we've identified the other projects that are in the queue. But really, Janelle, because this has deteriorated as quickly as it has, it's risen in priority. So, we've, Frank has been talking about concerns about tiles, and maybe we do a section of the hallway, maybe we do a repair, and it's been, how can we do piecemeal repairs? And we're getting to the point where we think, from a planning perspective, it makes sense to do it and take care of all the tile, all the asbestos, in that section of the building, the 300 and 400 wings, and then we would come back in CIP and put the 200 wing as the next phase of the asbestos abatement.
If I could add, the partitions at the middle school, that's a project that is already funded.
Right.
And scheduled.
And scheduled.
So, assuming, just a new guy, apologies, assuming we move forward with this, the 2.5%, we go that route, Randy was saying it might be around 450. We have 615 in that reserve, so are we going to use the 450 out of that, and then that remaining one, whatever the math is, goes back to the tax relief? Or are we going to do something with that? What will be the...
So, the remaining money, the 100 and however much it ends up being, the board would have two decisions. You could vote to retain that money as a designated fund balance, as part of the 2.5% contingency fund at the end of this fiscal year. So, June 30th, the board could take the action to retain that money into the next fiscal year, or the board could release that money for tax relief, or you retain the money, and then you could use it for tax relief at a future point?
Right.
Or a potential other type of emergency project that, again, would have to go through the same process.
And for us to use the 2.5%, the Spark Notes version is, we have to have a public hearing, the budget committee needs to approve what we're doing, they have a public hearing, and then it goes to town vote, or is that just it?
No, it goes to the commissioner of education. And the commissioner has to approve...
So, there's two public hearings?
The commissioner would have to approve after the, after the public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, just when this does come before the board, and we actually see the itemized layout for the project proposal, I would be happy to see the forecasted spend, as well as the management reserve that could be used. And I know that traditionally, we've looked at 10% from an industry standpoint as a management reserve. I'd like to see that type of layout when we see that project.
Agreed. In fact, that was Randy's recommendation as well.
Okay.
Same, same structure.
Thank you.
I've heard two things tonight from different people. I thought I heard it said that we could not do the whole thing in the summer, that we'd have to do it over phased-in, which I don't see how it can be done, not in summertime.
So, let me just clarify, if I may, Ellen. The sections of the building upstairs, the 300 and 400 wing, we would do that project this summer. That would be done, finished before school opens. All the tile would be removed, it would all be cleaned, new tile would be put in, and we'd be ready to open school after Labor Day. The set, the next piece is, there is a whole wing here that also needs to be done. We would not do that this summer. That would be looked at as a future project, either next summer or the summer after. We would plan and build that into CIP.
That's the 200 section that's back here?
Yeah.
It's just not as bad?
We could not do it in one year.
We couldn't, we couldn't afford to do...
Couldn't afford to?
No. And I think, timing-wise, we think that that would be, it's not enough time.
Okay, so, the numbers, I don't even want to say it, because it, the 450 plus other feet, the abating part, and it's not 450, it's going to be more than that. That's just for this summer?
No, it is, it is 450.
Yeah, the 450 is, is right now an estimate for the entire project.
The entire project.
So, that's the removal of the 12-by-12 tile.
When you say project, 200 wing as well.
The 300 and 400.
Just includes 200 wing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
That's what you're saying, next year for CIP?
Three and four. Well, putting in CIP doesn't give us the money, it just puts it on a list.
Right. Rather than, rather than try to dip back into the remaining funds in the 2.5%, we try to put it in CIP, which would be a warrant article. A future warrant article for the 200 wing. Correct?
Yeah, if, if the premise of the board was to use the capital reserve fund, then yes. It would be a future warrant article, for example, that we would bring before the voters in March of next year, with a potential start date of a project of the end of school in the summer of 2020. It would be a future warrant article, for example, that we would bring before the voters in March of next year, with a potential start date of a project of the end of school in the summer of 2020. Which seems like a long ways from now, but it's not.
It's not.
It's not.
Which is what's so scary about that number.
This is a presidential primary sometime.
Do you have a date for that, Mr. Cludier?
At the moment, it's the meeting day.
Anybody else? MC?
I have just a generic question. I was talking to Scott about it. So, we've talked about a quick deterioration, it appears, of the course. Have you changed any of the product that you're using on the floor, or the way that you attend to them, the process that you use?
The difference now, the answer to that is yes, is we have ride-on equipment that we're using in the hallways, but not in the classrooms. Furnishing in the hallways, and the auto scrubbers in the hallways, and it's still by-wamp in the classrooms, unless we take it out as a project and we move all the furniture and go under a piece of equipment.
But the product hasn't changed?
No.
So, you're not doing anything any different than you've ever done before?
Correct.
Good question.
At least for the last two years.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Motion on the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Standing? Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll keep that momentum moving.
We were talking about, I'm assuming the board sees the CIP plan?
Yes, the board approves it.
Approves it before it goes to the committee? If the board is in agreement, I know, I'd like to see, for lack of another term, CRF plans, or those things that don't rise to fit into CIP, what is that list, what is that matrix, what will they cost, and when do we foresee them happening? That would come under, not CIP, but we would be putting under, using the Capital Reserve Fund, or budgeting separately for it. I know, I'd like to see that, so there's long-term planning for these things. Of course, there's going to be emergencies.
For non-CIP-type items.
That would fall under the Capital Reserve Fund. I'd like to see that.
Well, we're working on the draft of the CIP plan right now, that we'll plan to bring to the board in probably late April, maybe early May.
Early May.
And so, we'll see if we can maybe think about non-CIP items that don't hit that $25,000 threshold.
Because that's what this, well, CRF was for CIP to help with that, too, but also these other ones, I mean, 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 is a lot of money, and it doesn't make CIP.
Sure.
And those things still need to take place and be done.
Sure.
So, I'd like to see that in the same kind of thing that CIP's done.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to presentations. First up, any of you that can see?
Mr. Farley.
Let's get this thing fired up.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Randy.
This is John, right?
So, just while Mr. Farley is getting that fired up, this is Kevin Farley, he's our high-school curriculum coordinator, and he's here this evening to present the report that we received. The board may recall, last year, the high school had an accreditation visit that occurred, and actually, going back to over two years at this point, right, Kevin? It's about a year and a half process for the faculty to get ready for the actual accreditation visit. So, this process has been going on for quite some time here at the high school, and actually, as timing would have it, right now, the middle-school is also going through the exact same process. Last night, we met with the visiting team, and many thanks to Reddit for being able to join us at that, and Wendy Lambert was also there. The accreditation team is at Mountain View, they were there today, they're there tomorrow, and do they conclude tomorrow, MC, or are they back on Wednesday?
I believe they conclude on Wednesday.
They conclude on Wednesday. So, our middle-school is also accredited, and that was an outcome of the 2014 area agreement, renegotiation. That was a new provision that was added to the agreement, that the middle-school is accredited through NEASC.
Ginny, didn't we have NEASC accreditation at Mountain View prior to the last one? No, that was the new?
Yep, that was new.
Time flies.
Yep.
For dozen months or two.
This is the second one we've done.
I thought this is the second of the one. I thought we had it in the previous one.
This is the second NEASC accreditation that we've had.
The middle-school had two different processes, NEASC actually changed their process, so when we first, we went through and had to get ready to become accredited, that was the first step.
Okay.
And then this is...
Okay, yeah.
Right.
But I know we did something.
Well, we had to go through and get accredited, that was the first step that we did.
Okay.
So, with that, the...
Re-accreditation.
This, what Mr. Farley's presenting is...
Not this one, the middle-school.
Yeah, the middle-school is the...
The first...
The first re-accreditation as part of the, it's the five-year process at Mountain View.
That's where we got confused. Back to Mr. Farley.
Mr. Farley, you're up.
Okay, well, first, let me tell you what NEASC stands for. That's the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and they do, they accredit high schools, middle schools, colleges, private schools, if they choose to do it, all through New England. The process is a 10-year process, it seems like, it seems like it's just the self-study and then the visit and the report, but it's really not. After all of this, there's a two-year follow-up report, and then there's a five-year follow-up report, and then the year before the self-study, the next one, there's a pre-self-study report, so it's a continuing process. So, what I'm going to show you tonight, really, to me, is the important summary of the giant report, because this is the stuff that we need to act on in the two-year report, and follow up on in each of those reports. This is where we move forward. As Brian said, we started in the 17, 18 school year, we spent the whole year as a complete, entire faculty, doing a self-study and writing our own report. Last year, in March, I believe it was, 2018, or 2019, the visiting team came in, they spent three days with us in the building, they... 18?
Yes, we're in 18 right now.
Yes, yes, that's right.
It was last day.
So, they submitted their report to us in the fall, we addressed the report, and then we finally, it was just the beginning of the month, this month, where we got the official letter that says, yes, we are officially re-accredited. So, what I want to do is, I want to run through, in that, that's a form letter, a standard letter, they tell you that you're re-accredited, and they list, a list of things that they found were really good in the school, and then afterwards, they will list a list of what they refer to as highlighted recommendations. And so, I'm going to go through both of those. The highlighted recommendations are those recommendations that require action, as I said before. So, this is where we're going to start formulating, what's our plan going to look like over the next couple of years, so that by the time we have the two-year follow-up report, we've had some action to report out on. So, of course, I want to start with the commendations. And to begin with, there were 20 commendations, and of those 20, I think that they're easier to act on and to focus on if you kind of cluster them into major areas of work, or of the recommendations, anyway. So, the areas of focus on the commendations were the school culture, and that's not different, because the 10-year ago report was the same thing, they praised the culture in the building, the school leadership, the school community, the student support and the opportunities for students, the student's performance, and the facility. And we're going to go through these one at a time. On the recommendations, we only had eight recommendations, which I think is a really strong outcome. Generally, you can have 25 to 50 recommendations to work on, we ended up with eight, so I feel good about that. And those areas were clustered around curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and like, as I said, we're going to go through each of those, so you'll see exactly verbatim what the recommendations were. So, let's start with the school culture, the commendations around the school culture. The core values and beliefs, that's our mission statement. It's a strong mission, it's a mission that we all believe in, it's well-supported, it's visible. I think if you ask students and parents about the mission, they'd all be able to tell you what that is. This is, this is part of the high school, if you go back 10 years ago, you're going to see the same thing, a very positive and respectful school climate, collegiality among the faculty, the common planning time, the way the faculty collaborates with each other, and the strong relationships between the administrations and the teachers. There's a lot of support and a lot of trust that goes both ways, from teachers to the admin team. In the area of school leadership, the direction, decision-making authority that this board and the superintendent's office has granted to the principal. They were impressed with the coordination of the curriculum, and I'm sure that you have heard many times before, we do really honestly have a K to 12 curriculum. We meet regularly, Nicole works to coordinate with the lower-grade levels, Nicole and I meet monthly to coordinate the higher-grade levels, and that didn't go unnoticed by the visiting team. The school community, lots of partnerships outside of the school building, lots of parental engagement with our staff, between our staff and parents, lots of support for the school budget, this is kind of a timely commendation, community support that we get. These are the support services that we provide kids. Great class sizes, adequate staffing in all of our specialty departments, they report out for guidance, special ed, health, library, we have coordinated services, and we have adequate staffing to do that, and that's not always the case in schools. The extra support that we have, whether it's the Learning Commons, whether it is what special education can provide, whether it is the homework den. Yes, there's a number of opportunities that kids have before, during, and after school to directly support their success. Go ahead.
Didn't the Learning Commons not exist when we were accredited?
That's very true. It is, Learning Commons is new, so...
Wasn't it like the Student Resource Center?
It was the Student Resource Center, yes. And we have kept the Student Resource Center and added the Learning Commons, so even though we were commended here, we continue to expand that and look for ways so that every kid can get the support at any level or any course. Lots of educational opportunities beyond high school, and also, we have an extremely high percentage of kids that participate. The numbers that I'm thinking in my head are up, like in the 70s or low 80s percent of kids that participate in something, and we will call, you know, band, drama, athletics, clubs, so that is just an extremely high number, and that's one of, if you were here for Parents Night, you would have heard Frank say, participate, participate, participate. That's something that we believe in, and it's something that, that message is getting through when kids are actually participating. Student performance, for the past couple of years now, we've been giving kids the PSAT as well as the SAT for grades nine, I'm sorry, grades 10, 11, and 11, the 11th graders get the SAT and the PSAT, and these are all free, we budget for them, and we use this information when we make decisions about student placement, when we make decisions about curriculum revision. The data is there, the teachers access it. The other is, we have really good test scores here, and that did not go unnoticed by the visiting team as well. And in the area of the facilities, I think this is something that we all know, extremely clean and safe, and this kind of might sound like education speech, what they mean is, the school has the spaces to give a 21st-century education. We're not cramming kids into closet space, we're not overcrowded, we have specialized spaces, we have technology to support these specialized spaces. So, that's the wrap-up on the commendations, and as I said, we're 20 commendations to only eight recommendations, so this will be the short part of it. In the area of curriculum, this is a recommendation, and this is not an easy one, but it will certainly be accomplished, they're talking about completing curriculum documents for all courses. Now, I don't want to leave anyone with the impression that some courses have them, and that some courses do not have them. Our courses have curriculum documents. There are some courses that are not as complete when it comes to adding essential questions, concepts, content, skills, 21st-century expectations, instructional strategies, assessment practices, many of those courses, in some of our departments that are not core department, we might have one teacher or two teachers teaching six different course offerings, so it's just about manpower to get these things written. It's easy when you have eight Algebra II teachers, or six Algebra II teachers trying to compile one curriculum document. So, that's what the difference is, but I want to say it again, we have the documents, every document has their units and their learning goals, they just not be, they may not be as complete as they really should be. So, that's a real, positive recommendation, it's going to guide us in the future. Please.
I was curious about the rubrics, the recommendation for rubrics, so do we all, do you have a school-wide rubric, or a course-based rubric?
We have both. The school-wide rubrics, that's a really good question, because we've been struggling with it. If you went back 10 years and looked at our recommendations, they would say, got to implement these school-wide rubrics. Well, the standard has changed a little bit, they want some kind of a formal, measurable way to measure our 21st-century learning, and then they've inserted "such as" school-wide rubrics. What I can say is, we don't use school-wide rubrics in some areas, we have school, we use other measures, we have school-wide rubrics for all areas, but we don't use them consistently. For example, we have a 21st-century learning expectation of speaking publicly, basically learning how to speak effectively, and there's a great rubric for it, but I don't think we're using it consistently. Every kid should have that opportunity to be measured using that rubric, and it's an area that's a true recommendation to work on.
And that's cross-cutting skill.
Yes.
Is that rubric adjusted by grade level or anything?
It is not. It's not, really what it's saying is, on a, it's divided into acceptable levels or below acceptable levels.
More generic.
It is, yep. But again, they're used inconsistently. In our mission, you'll see, for example, that students can work independently and collaboratively, and yes, there is a rubric for collaborative work, it's not being used, it's just not. And again, I said, as I said, for 10 years, we've been struggling with exactly how to implement this, it's on our list now, and luckily, we have a short list. Around the areas of instruction, you'll notice with the NEASC, they don't like a lot of anecdotes, they don't like that, oh, it happens in a lot of classes, what they do like is a formal process, so you're going to see that come up again in recommendations, they want a formal process, so that our teachers are examining the instruction in the classroom in order to make improvements, in order to make closer alignment to those reading, writing, speaking, listening. in order to make closer alignment to those reading, writing, speaking, listening. Once again, for a formal process to regularly assess and report whole school and individual student progress on those read, write, speak, listen, problem solve. And I would prefer that if they put on all 21st century learning expectations, because as you know, I come yearly with whole school progress on the reading, the writing, the problem solving. It's those areas of speaking, research, and collaboration that we could be better at reporting out on. And actually, I'm very lucky, it just dumped me, but that was the last slide, so... Oh, I'm sorry, no, we had one more recommendation about the webpage, yep. They would look for an update to the webpage.
I was curious about the grading and reporting practices on the assessment.
Oh, grading and reporting, yes.
What's going on there?
Grading and reporting, they made a very, in the general report that came out, the bigger one that I think you all have, not on the letter, they made a couple of recommendations that I thought were very, very prescriptive around grading. For example, they asked for us to come up with a process where students could retake assignments, they're looking at grading and looking at grading in relationship to timeliness, whether things are late, is there a late grade, are you docked for a late grade? They're looking at us at, what do we do with homework, is homework a grade, or do we only count what kids have learned? Do we create practice assignments where kids are just mastering skills? If you've mastered half of it and you get a low grade, should that count in the end if you have mastered all of it? So they're looking for just a general review with us, a little professional development with the faculty on what's important to grade, what's important to go into a grade.
So currently, does each class or each teacher has their own system?
Classes do, and I'll use the math classes as an example. Math classes, Kathy, you can pipe into. They will set a certain percentage of what a test score is worth in the overall grade, what is a quiz score worth, what is a project score worth, and these are uncommon across classes. But if you were to ask all of our teachers or all of our students, "Do we have a common grading practice across the school?", the answer would be no. And as I said, they kind of like the formal process approach to things, things that are systematic. So I think that would be an area to look at, school-wide, about what's important in a grade.
Great. Looking forward to hearing about that.
So that's highlights of the 100-page report.
Yes.
So it is important to know that there is a larger report. Did we give copies of the report, the whole report, to board members?
Not on paper.
Would people like paper?
100 pages, a page on it would be fine with me.
100 pages, okay. We'll send the full report out to the board, and we'll likely put that on our website as well, so that interested members of the public can also take a look. But this is essentially the highlights of the recommendations from the committee, and any questions that Kevin can answer?
Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, I don't have a question for Kevin, and I, excuse me if this is an automatic thing that happens and I'm not aware of it, but, and actually, it mentions in here, the sending district, can we make sure that they receive this information with the host community? Can we make sure that New Boston receives...
In fact, if you were to look at Mr. Farley's calendar on Wednesday evening, he will be making this same presentation to the New Boston Board.
I think that's very important for them to know about this.
Yeah, and really, we truly believe in the partnership between Goffstown and New Boston, and that's, Kevin's dance card is already full for Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Could we put something about this on like our Facebook, some sort of, just letting community members know, sort of, how good we did it?
How well we worked really well and are...
Receive full accreditation?
Yes, and the report needs to be made public to other places, they're very specific about where the full report needs to be, and they're looking at like the libraries in town, and they're, so it has to be made public. The goal here was to have the board get first crack at it, you know, before we sent it out to anybody else, so...
Thank you.
And this certainly should be one of three.
Yes.
Big time, along with the class.
Yes. Yeah, good point. Anyone else? Okay, we'll plan to send out the full report now that you've had the highlights from Mr. Farley, and any future board meetings, if there are more specific questions, we'd be happy to have Kevin back and be able to address them then.
That brings us to...
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
No other presentations?
Yeah, you do, you do.
No, you can shut it off. And in fact, the next agenda item, the Earth and Space Science Proposal, Kevin could speak to that briefly, but at this point, we are going to table that. We had a request from administration to talk a little more about the sequence of our physical science programs, and they, the administration has asked for a little more time to work with the teachers on that. I think we were trying to get something done in preparation for the upcoming building of the master schedule and the assignment of courses, and I think that there's some more work that needs to be done with the teachers, so we're going to pause on that now.
Yes.
Is this what CNE looked at the other day? So there's something else that's happened that, so it's not coming forward?
No, it's not happening.
However, administration did ask us to say thank you so much for being willing to consider the request and for them to be able to present it. When you do that, sometimes you go back and look at something more information comes to you, so at this point, but they did want to absolutely thank the subcommittee for being willing to consider the request, so thank you.
Interesting proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move along to our standing committee reports. I'll start with the policy committees. Both policy committees met last Monday. Goffstown Policy Review Committee was busy, we have some first reads and a second read. Later in the agenda, we are meeting on April 8th at 5:30 at the SAU Central Office. SAU Policy also met primarily to work on the superintendent evaluation policies. We made some further progress there, and we're meeting on April 8th, also on April 8th at 6:45 for a quick meeting, hopefully to finalize that policy.
Steve, excuse me, well, we all know what committees were on then?
That's later in the list.
Oh, okay. You already handed mine out.
It's in the packet too, if you want to sneak peek it. All right, K and C?
K and C typically meets on the first Monday of the month, and our meeting got scheduled, I mean canceled or postponed this month, and I unfortunately, in my head, said, "Okay, we're meeting next month." It was actually scheduled to be tonight, but I was not here, so I apologize for that. However, we will be meeting again the first week of April. One thing that we have been working on, we brought it up with the board several times, is our SMART goals for each of the subcommittees, and Brian had pulled together a sample of a SMART goal, so will you be sending that out?
I certainly can, I guess I would offer a couple of things, Rhonda. If subcommittees want to write their own goal, you could certainly do that using kind of a similar format, or I would offer that if you have things that you'd like to just give me, I'll put it into that kind of a format, a measurable type format. So either way, whatever is easiest for board members. But yes, we can send out the sample template, but if you want to just, you know, scratch some ideas down, I'd be happy to take it from there.
So I think in regard to when we'll need those, and if we're looking at the retreat in June, probably by early May.
Scott, you want to squeak some time into A and F so we can talk about that too?
Really want to do that too?
Just going to say, Steve, do you want us, do you want, should we put that on the agenda, make sure that we write a note for goals, because sometimes we get rolling and we don't think about it. So for policy?
Yes.
We'll just make a note, Denise, between you and me, so that we remember, either under other or something, and then Ginny will do the same thing for CNE, get it on the agenda.
All right. And for Tim, who wasn't here prior to tonight, we'll be looking at these SMART goals as we think about our strategic plan for the upcoming year.
Okay. CNE?
We met, and we had the meeting where we get reports of what's been going on with all of our schools. It was really quite interesting, as it always is. We did ask that all of our reports that the teachers, not principals, excuse me, gave us went out to you, and I believe you all got copies of those, just so that you can be up on some of that information as well. All of the schools reported out on their LEAP goals, and their LEAP goals reflect reading, math, science, and behavior. The schools reported out their MEWar and their SAS data as well. Maple Ave has a goal centered around systematic structure that cultivates continual growth and success for beginning teachers. That's something that they work hard on. Middle School provided an update to the tech ed program and shared a video, which was really quite cool. When we think of the tech ed, you think more of computers, and what they had was a hydro lab where they have plants growing and...
Hydroponics?
Hydroponics, yes, exactly. And they figure out how, what the humidity is, and when they should water, and through their robotics and their coating was really quite interesting. And High School reported on comparisons of gender in honors enrollment in this year. Seven is left. You all saw the handout that he did, and I think my takeout on that was, and if anybody else that was there could help me, it seems like the pink is the girls, of course, and the blue are the boys. And basically, it seems like the girls take AP and honors in core classes, and the boys choose more elective subjects or interest subjects. And that's pretty much, I think, do you agree with me, that was Kevin's takeout on it?
They were sort of, they were choosing the classes based on interest.
On interest, yes.
Right. Not just...
If I can just add to this, because this has been something that I've kind of focused a lot on. When we see the top 10 every year, it's consistently eight girls and two boys, seven girls and three boys. And when we look at the data, we find that our boys and girls are achieving at very similar levels when we look at standardized metrics, but the girls have higher GPAs. And that is directly attributable to more girls taking more AP and honors courses, which are weighted for their GPAs. So what I've tried to work with, and the administration has tried to work with, our teachers and our school counselors, is let's make sure that we're challenging our boys. That if the boys go into their school counselor and say, "Oh, I'm going to take these courses," that I want those counselors to say, "Well, did you think about this AP class? Did you think about this honors class?" And to really push our boys to make sure that they're being encouraged to take a robust, rigorous course load, just like the girls are doing. And it's something that I think the data is starting to change a little bit, but I think it's happening slowly. But, you know, we continue to see the top 10 and the top 20 being disproportionately weighted towards girls, present company excluded.
Whoa, our grade is four guys in the top 10?
I know.
Brandon, are you in any AP courses? Are you in any AP courses? Yeah. Good man.
And I think that also depends upon each class also, you know, the students that are in each class too. Some other things that I thought were interesting that we should know about is both Bartlett and Glenlake are very pleased with the assistant administrator that they are able to share. They're finding that very helpful and thank us for adding that to our budget this year. The lady is getting used big time. She's a very busy lady, but...
And she's doing a great job.
The two schools, they are very pleased with her.
Yes.
Also, Glenlake is continuing to struggle with space, but they're all doing it very well and smiling. Good people there, they work very hard. Also, all of the elementary schools are really enjoying their SMART boards and their robotics, and they're doing some really cool things with them too at that level. Bartlett and Maple Avenue have been collaborating to get their schedules the same, which they have done this year. They were finding it a little difficult, especially at Bartlett, because they have so many part-time people, to be able to collaborate to make sure that they have their 90-minute block, and they found that difficult to do, but they did make it happen. And they are collaborating a lot to make sure the programs are similar in both. Also, Bartlett has a family teaching program, which was quite interesting, where they have families come in and they work with them on, you know, different childcare, family care sorts of things, and it was a very interesting program, which it seems...
It was Glenlake.
Pardon me?
It was Glenlake, right?
I'm sorry.
It was Glenlake?
Glenlake.
Jillian McPhail was teaching that with the kindergarten kids.
Right, right, I'm sorry. And they would like to be able to expand that program, but it's not possible right now, but logistically. And they're all pleased with the core reading program, it's going very well, the teachers are enjoying it, the students are enjoying it. And Kevin started his talk off about how they want the curriculum to go through, through the ages, and that they find it here. And in going through this program and listening to the principals talk, you can see how it starts out at Glenlake and ends up at the high school, and they're all working on the same things, and the curriculum is starting here and ending here with all the strands going along. All of the programs are connected, all of the textbooks and the reading are connected. So it really shows, and we hear that all the time, how everything's connected and working together through Kevin and Nicole working on that, so... That's my take on it, Rhonda, or do you guys have anything else you want to add?
I just wanted to add about the program over at Glenlake is for ages, two to six-year-olds. It's a class, you can correct me too if I'm wrong, it's a six-week class that they offer free of charge for parents who are dealing with kids who have a variety of behavioral issues, and how to work with these kids and how to be successful. The report back was that there was just this amazing response from the parents and a huge change in the kids in the classroom, and it just sounded like such a fantastic program. This teacher, was her name?
Jillian McPhail.
Jillian McPhail.
She's one of our great special ed teachers.
Came up with the curriculum for it and is teaching it and is just going gung-ho, and it was one of the best things I heard in CNE in a long time about...
The family support.
Yeah, supporting the family, bringing that, you know, out of the classroom and home. And a lot of these parents don't know what to do with these kids with these behaviors, and, you know, they just end up getting frustrated and angry, and this is a way out, a way out of that cycle to help the kids be successful in the classroom. It was just really nice to hear.
And also, one thing that we went through is, all of the... And also, one thing that we went through is all of the different activities and programs that go on in all of our schools, like the parade and activities nights, and how PFT is really supportive of Maple Avenue, and how the Turtle Walk at Glenlake is so cool and it's being added on to every year. And just all kinds of interesting things that are going on at all of the schools with the activities. It's not just the high school where kids participate and different things, and their little assemblies instead of field trips. There's a lot of interesting activities going on for the younger students as well.
And that's a really great point, Ginny. That's something we don't probably talk about nearly enough. On Thursday, I was at Maple Ave, and I had the good pleasure of being serenaded by 52 kids that are in the show chorus at Maple Ave. They were fantastic. I mean, so here is a room full of 52 kids performing, and that's not something we typically talk about. So it is happening. There are lots of extensions beyond the traditional classroom for our kids at all levels.
Yes. I think that's the end of my report note, and we will have our next meeting on April 8th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
Great. Thanks, Ginny. A and F?
A and F met this evening at 1800 sharp, and we took the full hour. That's why we're trying to schedule something in to talk about our lovely goals for our young girls, but we'll get to it. By unanimous vote of the subcommittee, we would like, as a committee, to offer a total manifest value for full approval of this committee in the amount of $3,475,341.79.
Second.
We have payroll, payroll taxes, the information for health insurance, New Hampshire Retirement System, the GEA and the GES dues, the 403Bs, the life disability, $2,435,473. Standard things, those are fixed costs. This goes by, and we did get the contract approved, so that will continue. Teachers should be with us for another three years. We have some special education expenses that are $5,000 and over to any particular vendor. We have several of them this evening. We have our January and February transportation for SED to Durham Transportation for $152,307. Then the balance of these are for services rendered to students. We have two students for January and February to the St. Alding, $26,528. Mount Prospect Academy for two students, $82.51. One student at Lighthouse School, $66.59. A student for the Easter Seals, $51.15, and that's a late billing from last October. The Birds Tree Center, one student in April, $81.51. Core vocational services, two students in February for $74.94. Edu healthcare, special ed teacher, what we're doing there actually, for $5,830. We presume, we didn't have it definitively, but maybe, you know, Brian, as we couldn't get a special education teacher directly, so we had to go to a hiring outfit.
A contracted agent.
A contracted. So that's what that is. Crest Collaborative, one student, $5,420. The Strong Foundations for five students in February, $62.93. The SED subtotal is $38,303, vendors that are $5,000 and over for this manifest. Some general expenses, we paid the SAU for two months, February and March, for $226,090. We paid the Goffstown Truck Center, $127,369. That's regular education, February transportation. The town of Goffstown, as you know, we have an SRO that we send the money back to the town because the SRO officer actually works for the town, works in the school, works for the town, $40,177. That's for more than half the year, by the way. You'll hear it's a little less than $80,000 for the whole year. So John Neville Escavating, if you remember, we had the Goffstown High School project for the drainage. It successfully met its warranty period, so we released the retainage, $21,232. We engaged the Granite State Plumbing for various school plumbing repairs, $7,708. And you heard earlier about the projects, and we looking to get some money back. Well, security cameras, that high-definition security cameras, $99,449. That piece of it is about $57,000 for the school district and the $43,000 from the grant. Dead River Propane, $46,208. Ever Source Electricity, $43,089. WB Mason, which is our school supplies, paper, et cetera, $5,619. Supply Works, which we hear about, our custodial and maintenance supplies, $73.57. Here's a, you heard about the NEASK. Well, Mountain View's going through the NEASK, and the people are staying at the Hilton Garden Inn, so we made a payment there, $5,374. Amazon Supplies for all schools, $68.57. There were no student accounts over 5,000, and we bought food, commodities, and assorted milk, including chocolate milk, $27,364. No, I will not let that chocolate milk go through. That's what we have. And?
We missed, the SED total is not 38,000.
Yeah, it's a 200-
It's 232.
You know, that's a little low. I read off the sheet, didn't I?
Yeah.
So what do you got there, Scott? All right. I guess I was just reading and not interpreting.
None of us met, saw that.
Good catch, people.
Like, that doesn't add up.
That was a quiz.
I have a quick question. I don't know if I missed it, about the EDU healthcare special ed teacher.
Yeah.
Who was that?
That was, because we couldn't find an actual teacher to pay as a person, so they went to a hiring, a contracted service provider. I don't know if this is long-term or not. No, it's short-term, and it's more for behavioral-type needs, so it's someone with a behavioral background.
And it's short-term, maybe a month, year?
I think maybe the next couple of months, but I think not continuing beyond that.
Are we looking to hire for it?
Yeah, it was something that we have had a vacancy posted, that we hadn't been able to find someone, so we had a need for a student, and we had to look at a contracted service instead of a hiring of an employee.
It's good to know that that exists for emergency service.
Sometimes they do. There are a couple of very specialized folks that provide some of those services.
Anyone else? See none? All those in favor approving the manifest?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Dan?
We have a few more agenda items that are going to come up later on the master agenda that we can check.
Okay. Superintendent, report?
Just a few quick things. We were notified by the Department of Ed. We're evaluated every year on our special education timeliness of initial evaluations. The law says we have to have our initial evaluations done within 60 days, and the Department of Ed tracks that every year, and we had 100% compliance last year, so we were very pleased with that. You should have received in your packets, there are a number of workshops and different opportunities for growth and professional development for board members provided through the New Hampshire School Board Association, so those are things that you might be interested in. We included a copy for you all around our special education facilitator at Mountain View. I think the board is aware that Tam McAllister will be starting with us on April 29th. We're very pleased to be welcoming Tam to our team, and Mrs. Moran updated our calendar to reflect the one snow day that we've had thus far. A couple of other things, I did want to let the board know, because we didn't have our last meeting, that there were students that attended the NHIAA, which is the Interscholastic Athletic Association, the annual leadership conference. That's a conference that we have kids go to every year, so we did have a number of students who attended that conference. We will have our state, all of our state reps and our state senator have been invited to come to the board in April and talk about adequacy funding, stabilization grants, building aid, and full-day kindergarten. Those are a few topics that I had shared with our members of the General Court. I think I've heard back from all but one of them, and I believe they will all be here, so we'll look forward to that conversation with them. The board has heard me talk in the past about Goffstown being randomly selected every single year without interruption for NAEP testing, and on March 5th, we had 94 students that were randomly selected, 86 participated in the NAEP assessment, and we had eight that were excused. And we also, on March 8th, had New Boston students that were randomly selected. We had 49 students selected, and we had 39 participate in the NAEP assessment. This is a national assessment. We don't get any individual results back on the kids or for the school. The data comes back as an aggregate whole for the state of New Hampshire, and it's how the national DOE compares how states are doing and how school districts are doing and able to compare with other countries.
They must want us to lift up our score.
That may be the case. On voting day on March 12th, we had a very busy day, Mrs. Berry and her leadership. We had workshops and trainings for teachers across all schools. I have a big, long list. I'd rather not kind of read through the whole thing, but MC, maybe you can give just a few highlights, because it looks, MC gave me a copy of every single school's schedule, but maybe just a few highlights, if you would?
We had trainers coming in for Wonders for Initial Language Arts for our 256 teachers. They also worked on spelling with the three teachers, and they went back to their home buildings and began to work on science and the other elements of the new programs that they're moving in. At the middle school, they worked in all of their content areas to continue to move their programs forward. Here at the high school, they worked on, they continued to have, Brian, what's the best way to phrase this? The conversations that were started probably about a month and a half ago, where we talked about differences and how we're dealing with tolerance and culture and climate within the high school community, which also has to do, the other schools are talking about this as well, teachers had an opportunity.
We actually had about 35 teachers that participated in a conversation with Dr. Christine Rath, who's the retired superintendent at Concord. We asked her to come in and talk about race and talk about the effects and the, some of the struggles that our kids may have, but to have a very honest, frank conversation. And actually, you all received a copy of my memo to Principal McBride that laid out all the, sort of the questions that I had posed. And I would just highlight a couple of things that I had shared in that memo, that if you look at the national data, there has been a fairly significant increase in the number of hate crimes in this country and internationally. So I presented some of that data and then just had a series of questions. And I didn't attend the session, but from everything that I heard, the teachers had a pretty powerful conversation about that and are working on a number of recommendations that they'll be making to administration.
And as we, as is our culture here, we look at multiple-year plans for professional development, and very often organically grows with what teachers tell us the needs are, because they're boots on the ground with our kids. So as this feedback comes to us, it is part of what we use for the high school administration to develop a multi-year plan. Also, working with the elementary and middle schools with a lot of the elements of social emotional learning. Mrs. Kishka spent the morning with the team, looking at what does that look like universally across Maple Avenue's school and developing protocols and trainees for teachers, talking about that. And Bartlett Elementary had a training in the afternoon on the teacher workshop around the nurtured heart. So how do we, how do we work with children in the universal level in the classroom who maybe are a little bit dysregulated and need just a little bit of time, so they may find themselves, you know, kind of curled up with a book in the corner, or how do we deal with that? Do we kind of let that go and give the child a little bit of time to regulate themselves? How do you know which steps to take and when? So we are, and that's part of LEAP goals in all of the schools. So, you know, a lot going on that day. The other thing that teachers spent a bit of time on is for teachers who are in year three of their recertification cycle, as you know, we have a new online platform, so teachers spend some time working through getting their documentation prepared and ready. This is a new process, and we'll have some one-on-one trainings and group trainings for all of that to get things going, so. So far, so good. It was a busy day.
Thank you, MC. Just a few more quick things. A few dates to share with you. At this point, the middle school eighth-grade promotion has been set for June 12th. High school graduation has been set for June 13th, and New Boston Central School's sixth-grade promotion will be June 14th. So we've got a few dates to share there. We did want to let you know, and this may be something that we choose to talk about when our members of the General Court join us, but the ConVale School District has announced that they are suing the state over educational funding. So this is pretty new, but ConVale voiced their frustration, and they are, quote, "unwilling to keep waiting." And they believe that the approximately $3,600 that we receive per pupil is not an adequate education, and that the state has not met their constitutional obligation to provide for an adequate education for all children in New Hampshire. So we'll be very interested to see what happens with that ConVale lawsuit, if there are other communities that choose to join that consortium, but it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the community and thank all of the voters for participating in our vote last week, and that I'm, again, incredibly appreciative and humbled by the support of the community for both our budget, our teacher contract, which is the most important thing to us, and the creation of our capital reserve fund. That was a kind of a long process, and I'm glad that we are going to have that tool moving forward to be able to help plan some of our facilities projects. And so many thanks to all the voters and folks who participated in that.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business. We have a second read policy, EGB-P procurement policy for federal funds. Anybody have any further comments or questions as a second read?
I just have one. In the bottom, a lot of times, we have a reference to what we can reference to. This one doesn't have a whole lot. I didn't know, since we had changed it to micro and small purchases to say amount as defined by the federal government procurement guidelines, if there was anything particular we could just add that, that kind of gave us a better indication of what that reference was for. Is there any kind of federal identification for that manual, like an OMB, a circular something?
Yeah, the only thing that I learned, Dan, was that in terms of micro purchases, that they're going to increase that to $10,000, so it's going to be a moving number going into the future, so that rather than tie-
Right. But I'm saying, I'm looking to tie it to something, but something isn't the federal government, is the product called the federal government procurement guideline, or do they have some kind of number? So if I went on and I searched the web, I can actually find it.
Like a particular citation?
Yes. That's what I was kind of hoping, that maybe, I don't know if it's at the top, CFR 200.17 through that, and if it is, then that's great, maybe we can just add it like we do on some of the other ones at the bottom. That would be my only recommendation, if it makes sense.
I think it's a good suggestion. Perhaps we can move it for approval, just with that, sort of as an administrative.
I would make that move. Motion.
Motion. Make it move with the motion.
Make it move.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got a motion by Dan?
A second.
Second by Heather. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining, sorry. I didn't hear what the motion was.
You're abstaining?
Yep.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the election results overview. Obviously, election day went well. We had strong support for our warrant articles. I don't know if anyone had any specific comments they wanted to share other than- I don't know if anyone had any specific comments they wanted to share other than that, Brian. Really just gratitude for, you know, for the strong support and glad that we were able to get these important articles passed.
Just to say ditto on really thank you for supporting us so well.
I think one thing that I saw is the capital reserve fund, it seemed like everything else passed with lots of support, that one had a little less support. And I think as we move forward, I think we're doing it now, but continuing to explain the process so they understand we're not just using it completely wrong and we have a process for using it.
Right. I think the more transparent we can be about that particular fund, the better.
If I could add to that, being on, sort of for those who might not be familiar with me, I was on the Budget Committee last year when we reviewed that. I think what I would say, coming from that perspective, you know, being on this side of things, if, when we take this or when we go through the budget process in the fall, we sort of touched on it, like Ellen did, with sort of a CRF timeline, what we're looking to use it for. If we could keep that in mind going into the fall and maybe bring to the Budget Committee, I think it would be a good selling point of like, hey, you know, this was the goal of the CRF as outlined. This is what we've spent in arm thus far. And then maybe like a before and after of this is what the issues were, this is what the issues now look like resolved, and then here's sort of the barometer of where we think we're heading with it. Just coming from the Budget Committee, I voted in favor of the CRF and I was a proponent for it, but there were those that they voted in favor in the end, but there was dissension towards it. And I think we might not be so fortunate next time around. And so if we could maybe prove our salt going into the season by having some of this evidence, to your point, Retta, I don't think we would see as much of a tilt, because I did note that as well. There wasn't as large of a discrepancy. I think it would definitely help and it would help the Budget Committee because all those members are very vocal in the community. So if you can truly win them over, it would help us in the fall. Good advice.
I was impressed with like the first time we had it on the ballot, that it was approved because a lot of times when you put something on the ballot first time around, people are uncomfortable with it. So to what Retta said, I think we did a good job explaining it so that people were okay with going ahead and trying it.
And I think you see that because you had 12-0 or 12-11-1 budget committee approval.
Exactly.
Do you want to keep that number?
Yeah, you always want to keep those numbers.
Although, to be fair to Brian, he did say a couple of times, he's been fighting years for this and so now he finally got it.
I'm a patient man.
That's right. That's exactly what he said.
Okay. That brings us to new business. We have to approve a few things. First up, student handbooks.
Yes. I'd like to bring a motion forward to approve our student handbooks for the year 2019, 2020.
Second by Janie. Second by Janow. Any questions, discussion?
Unfortunately for me, I didn't get a chance to read them. They're pretty much the same as the previous year in non...
They're really pretty much the same. Yeah, we've worked them right down to the fine details and there are a lot of just word changes, just date changes, personnel name changes. There were some changes.
Food service.
I don't have my stuff in front of me. Changes that needed to be made because of safety, because of immunizations, maybe in February if the department changes their standards. Pretty cutting forward.
Thank you.
No.
With no drastic change in policy, really?
No drastic changes, just small changes, the ones that are necessary going on.
Janie, it was put on hold, the science question. Wasn't that supposed to be put in the handbook?
Not in studies. It's canceled for this year.
But it's a different book, Ellen. It's the program of studies.
And that's not involved in the handbook?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion a second. All those in favor?
Agreed.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Thank you all.
Some results from photography bid?
Mr. Gross?
All right. So I spoke before the Admin Finance Committee. We have a photography RFP that went out. Seven firms were solicited, seven firms returned bids. I had probably about seven or eight folks from the schools come serve on a committee and we met two or three times to review all the bids. We narrowed it down to three final contenders. We looked at criteria such as quality, photo quality, ease of use, cost, obviously the price, because we don't charge the price. The parents are the ones who pay. Looked at yearbook ease was a big one. We've had a lot of issues with getting quality yearbook photos and the integration of getting these photos to the yearbook staff, some issues there. So that was a big factor. So in the end, the committee unanimously selected Hockmeyer with Barksdale as the vendor that they want to proceed with. I concur with that, obviously. I wouldn't be here if that recommended if it wasn't the case. One of the compelling reasons for using Hockmeyer was that they were the only one that was going to offer a, more or less, a complimentary picture package to all students regardless. And we thought that was a nice thing. And essentially, looking at the prices competitively, they offered a very competitive price. They got great reviews by other schools and by folks who are the yearbook advisors of different schools who our folks speak with. So by and large, they had a very competitive bid and that's who we're recommending. Any questions?
The administrators in Finance Subcommittee voted unanimously to follow the business administrator's recommendation to award the picture taken to Hockmeyer. As an aside, there was no cost to the school district, but because they're using our facility, we normally hold on that.
Anyone have a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead. Make a motion to approve this as written.
Second by Jared. Second by them. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Electric rates?
Mr. Gross?
I'm sorry. Yeah, which I didn't hear because I was...
Electricity.
Electricity. It's okay. So in terms of electricity, as you know, in the past, the district has gone with a supplier called Standard Power. And this year, we also looked at another company, Patriot. And I can hand these out if you want to pass them around, so I have extra copies for those who are not on A&amp;F. Essentially, in looking at these two companies in terms of kilowatt hour, Standard Power is offering a price as of now, although we are not yet locked in, of about 7.5 cents per kilowatt hour. And that rate will go slightly lower if we sign up for a 48-month agreement with them. And that's a very competitive price. I don't know what it... I'm told that under eight cents is real good. And so the town also, the town of Goffstown also worked with us on this one and the selectmen have also given authority for the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Standard Power for either a 36 or 48-month agreement. The issue is that typically, electricity pricing is best in the months of March and April. And they've given the town administrator, I would ask for the same, where you would give me the authority to enter into a lowest price possible with Standard Power for either a 36 or 48-month agreement, knowing that the price will more than likely be about seven and a half cents or less per kilowatt hour. And that's where we stand with the electricity rates.
The same vote came out of the A&amp;F Subcommittee unanimously.
Does anyone have a motion here?
I'll make a motion to have the business administrator or his proxy negotiate on our behalf with Standard Power for 36 or 48 months, please.
All right, Jared. Second by Heather. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Great. That brings us to Primex, the property and liability program. We got offered an agreement for the contribution assurance program for the next three coverage years that would, it would cap our increase at a maximum of 7%. And so we need approval to enter into that agreement.
So the A&amp;F talked about this again, we've talked about it, and not to confuse, this is just for the property insurance, not for workers' comp. This is only property. And you remember how our premiums had been going up like crazy because of the floods and those have been mitigated and were stabilized and we all thought it was a great idea. So I will offer this motion that we accept the Primex three-year not to exceed 7% offer they've given us.
Motion by Dan. Second by Heather. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? All right, so we have a couple of policies for first reads. We'll start with DID, fixed capital assets. We worked on this one at our last policy review meeting. Scott's obviously had his hand in this one as well. If anybody has any questions or comments from the first read. Okay. Seeing none. We'll be seeing this again in a couple of meetings for a second read. Next up, we haveKF and KF-R, disability usage. It's a pretty substantial revision from our prior policy reg. Scott has done a lot of work on this and we're trying to kind of bring some evenness and equality through the process and the groups that use our facilities and have some tighter controls on it. Again, this is just first read, but the idea here is to see if we can get some consensus on the policy and the reg so that Scott can then go and work on some of the schedules that you'll note aren't here, meaning the forms and the pricing, right, Scott?
Yes. The fee schedule itself.
And so the intent here is to try to have this effective July 1st, so we want to act on this before the end of the school year. Ellen, did you have your hand up?
Yes. I have a significant concern with a piece of this policy regulation. And I'm going to request that board remove three words from the regulations, page two of six of the regs at the top, category B1. And I'm asking the board to remove, direct the Subcommittee to remove the words, "New Boston." And if I get a second, if I need to make a motion, I will speak to it. But, or maybe I will. Didn't make a motion. Our schools are our schools. These belong to the taxpayers of Goffstown. The way this is worded, New Boston is getting potentially free use, the town of New Boston, not the school district, is getting potentially free use of any part of Goffstown school facilities. While it's not envisioned that it would be much at all, I object to allowing the use of our schools potentially for free to people who are not Goffstown taxpayers. I think I understand completely about us being a host community and we have an area agreement. I totally understand that. I think Goffstown's been very generous in our area agreement with New Boston. I also understand that there was an occasion at some point in the past where somebody in Goffstown needed to use a facility in the schools or something in New Boston and they allowed it. I appreciate that. But to put in our policies that we are willing to allow another community to use our school facilities potentially for free, I think is not in the interest of our taxpayers.
So I have a slightly different view on that. First of all, I mean, I know we talk often about how valuable our partnership is with New Boston. I think that that's a piece of this here, but I just read the language of the reg quite differently than Ellen does. And we talked about it at our Policy Review Committee meeting that Ellen was present for, but I would just point out that category B includes New Boston organizations, sports leagues, churches, religious groups, or committees serving the Goffstown community. So this, they would only fit in this category if they were a type of organization from New Boston or primarily New Boston, but they would have to have a component where they're serving the Goffstown community. So it's not, we're not opening up Goffstown facilities to the town of New Boston or the town of New Boston's organizations en masse. I think it's, the language is pretty targeted in that regard, I think.
So like if there was like a soccer league, like they had Goffstown players on it, then they would be eligible? Is that the kind of thing that you're saying?
That's my understanding of it.
Okay.
If I may, if you can turn to page six of six. And number two, category B organizations, because that's what we're talking about. So if you read the first two, Class B organizations will not be charged for the use of school classroom space as long as custodial staff are in the building. All right? Number two, and this is where I think the issue is, all other school facility uses by Class B organizations are subject to the fees in Schedule A. So they are going to be subject to fees. So regardless of whether or not they're New Boston or Goffstown entities, they are, they will be subject, you know, to fees. So the thought process behind this was that if you have a group that wants to meet here, and I'll use one group as an example, let's say the mothers' club and they use a classroom, well, there's custodians here. It's really not a big deal, but if you're going to be using this room where chairs and tables have to be moved around, then there probably was going to be a fee for the custodians to move things around. Or if you're using a gym, a bigger facility. The intent here was that if it's a classroom space, and we're talking about designating classrooms on the first floor, that it would be very minimal disturbance and use of the facility. And in that respect, that was the thought process behind it. It's ultimately your decision, but I wanted to let you know what my thoughts were when I wrote it.
Can I just chime in? That language actually came from me. So part of my thinking, I concur with Stephen's assessment of this, if it is a New Boston organization that directly benefits Goffstown kids, that was sort of the intent that I was going for. And I would just remind the board, we do have a great partnership with New Boston and New Boston does spend about $7.5 million in tuition here every year. So it's, I understand and there's part of that is a rental fee that they're paying for the facilities on a per-student basis, but I saw it as Stephen assessed it, as a direct benefit to Goffstown kids. If it's a New Boston organization that has benefit for Goffstown kids, that was the intent.
Okay. If I may? I needed to hear that clarification because I have also heard from people at this table that we are one community with New Boston. I've heard it twice from people at this table, which made me question this language, okay? I needed to hear the different explanations that I just, we just heard from Scott and Therefore, if all we're doing is providing free use of an available classroom, which quite honestly, as one person, I have no problem with should that be needed and is available, why does this even need to be in there?
You mean in terms of the categorization?
No, just the, or New Boston. Why can't we just have like a category? Why can't we just have like a category that allows New Boston the use of one classroom? If needed.
Because it's not just a classroom. It could be anything. It could be a field, it could be anything.
But then they recharge a fee.
Possibly.
Right.
But New Boston is part of us. I mean, we're not saying where, we're not saying Dunbar, and we're not saying, you know, we have a great relationship with them. I respectfully disagree with taking them out. I don't, especially when they're in category B, there could be a charge depending, but because we do so many things together, their kids come here, I feel that it should be opened up to them if they need it, especially if it serves the Goffstown community. You know, we almost lost them, and they stayed on for another ten years.
I just feel that, yeah, good relationship. Oh, I have nothing against New Boston, the talent, the people, the board members, nothing at all. I think they've been wonderful people. The area agreement allows the sending district to be, send their children to another host community, us, to receive an education, and in that there's a formula the state gives us, that they pay tuition for that education. And in Goffstown, I believe, that's a pretty darn good one, just like our kids. And I think both communities benefit from that arrangement. I see potential problems, possibly, opening it up to the entire New Boston community and town, if their organization is serving Goffstown?
Community.
Community, the Goffstown, Goffstown. Potentially, if there isn't some kind of parameters to that, I could see that becoming a real problem, even if it is with fees, because we use our schools and our grounds considerably. And I really have a problem with that because of the costs and the manpower and the work we put into building and maintaining our schools constantly. I'm not so sure it would be wise to open up the use to another district, another town. But that's, I'll just say my piece.
Jenny?
Steve? I know that like gym time is used considerably, and it's hard to get gym time. Would there be a way where Goffstown teams could have first dibs on that and any of the other teams second? Because I know the gyms are used pretty much continuously during the season, either with, I think, men's or students' sports.
At least a statement saying, when available, and priority given to Goffstown.
Yeah, maybe.
It's in there already?
Somewhere?
Yeah.
Is it?
I was trying to find it too, Scott.
I didn't see that at all. I remember hearing, talking about it, but I don't remember seeing it.
Because I'd hate to see either Parks or Rec or the over thirty-three something bump.
See, they're a category A.
Okay.
Right.
They're a category A, municipal use. So.
And, okay, and category A gets first use?
First dibs.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not charged fees. They have requirements for supervision and things like that, but we recognize, I think when we were talking about this to the committee, we recognized the fact that we have a really good relationship with Parks and Recreation and the town. There's a lot of things the town does for the school district and vice versa, so.
Okay. Okay, I haven't read it, so I was just making sure that that was in.
I guess I do want it on record. I want to make a motion that we remove the words or New Boston, and I want the vote on record, that we are allowing non-Goffstown people use of our schools.
Motion by Ellen.
I have a question for Ellen about, what about category C when it talks about all other organizations, or any group approved, it doesn't say any other thing about New Boston, Goffstown. It could be, hooks that could come in about the way that it's worded on category C on page two of six.
I see you.
But it's always approved, it's approved by the superintendent of schools, or they're designee.
Out of town groups.
Such as all other organizations.
Category C?
Mm-hmm. Two of six.
It must be in one place, excuse me.
Right below, right below what you're asking.
Oh, other one, I'm not sure. No, what is that? I made the assumption it was out of town.
I think it's the catch-all, so if you're not in A or B.
You're a C.
You're a C.
As long as the superintendent approves the use.
Alright, so there's a motion by Ellen. Is there a second for Ellen's motion?
I'll second just so that we can have the conversation as it continues.
Okay. Second by Jared. Any further?
And for the record, you didn't have to second it for the conversation to continue.
The motion was there.
You seconded it so that we'd have a vote on it.
I would like to be able to read it thoroughly before voting one way or another on anything.
Is that a motion to table?
No, not necessarily. This is just my.
Okay, I feel the same way.
This is just my opinion.
I want to read it before I vote on that. So I'm making a motion, we table that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Does anyone want to table that one, or can we vote on it?
You can't discuss a tabling motion, so we've got to just vote on the table.
I just don't want to get stuck in some.
I want to talk about it, but I want to talk it, maybe we can talk about it, even though we don't talk about it in two weeks.
We can, we can at least chat.
Yeah. I'd like to really suck on that before I make that.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I discovered something in here that I did not recall discussing at the committee either.
Right.
Which helped me. And the discussion I heard here tonight was a little helpful, but I have a real concern about actually codifying it in the regs.
Okay. All those in favor of the table motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Standing?
I don't get a vote. I wanted to get your attention. I wasn't voting.
You have my attention. Good work.
Do you want to vote?
As we move forward and implement school due, which is coming through the scheduling in all the schools, one of the parts of that is that at the end of the school year, the next school year will be completely populated with all of the things that the schools already, the Goffstown schools already know what they're doing. So all the sports will go in, all the theater stuff goes in, all of the clubs, all of those things get front-loaded because the schools have, first preference, they have priority. So the calendars are going to be full before the year really even opens up for someone to be able to select things in all the schools. So I think that's also information that we know and we have rolling around in our heads that you should have as well.
Thanks. Alright, let's move on to.
Just for giggles, because if I can, on the actual policy, on page two, the very last, number thirteen, there's two to be to be. So that's just a grammatical modification. Custodians and staff are to be to be paid. I don't know if that's double rate or not. No, it's not double rate. Clearing that out. Thank you.
Alright, let's talk about committee assignments quickly. In your packet, I put together the list for committees moving forward. I tried my best to take into account everyone's requests and preference. I also tried to keep some measure of continuity from our committees from this past year, because I think they worked really effectively. But if anybody has any questions, concerns, gripes, just come see me and talk to me about it.
Yes.
You want to air publicly, or you want to?
No.
Okay.
I'd want to air.
See this?
As, if Tim is going to be the budget committee representative, there's a meeting tomorrow, by the way. Just wanted to let you know, seven o'clock, same place. It is extremely helpful for that budget committee rep to be on A&amp;F, because you're dealing with the financials all the time. So rather than being an alternate, it probably would be, could behoove him to be a regular part.
Or perhaps he could sit at the table to hear, but not be a voting member. It could be both. Only if the, if the reason for your request is to be.
You can have four people too, though.
Well, here's the thing with Tim. The budget committee gets very intensive, and it's been our, like, little thing that's, we spend an hour, it used to be fifteen minutes, we took it to a half an hour, we took it an hour. I bet you if we met at 5:30, we'd talk for ninety minutes, because there's a lot going on. So no pressure for Tim, but it's one of those things that says, hey, there's a lot of work to be done, and we meet every other week. So the pressure, if he did want to make the meeting or then not make the meeting, that would be okay too.
I'll be at the meetings.
Well then, I mean, it's up to whatever.
I'll give it some more thought. I mean, if you think you're going to be at every meeting, then it seems, maybe we could move some resources.
If I could not be on the elementary facilities building committee, I would.
You know how many times they met last year?
Zero, okay.
I think the last meeting was when I.
I don't know, it's a committee talladega.
I think it's going to have to pick it up a little bit now. I hope it's going to run out.
You're already now. I'm already there.
I think you're already there, yeah.
Are you volunteering or are you just answering questions?
No, I'm volunteering.
Yeah, we won that one last time.
I wanted to kind of echo a little bit of what Scott was saying. Being on the CIP committee, and the budget committee, and the A&amp;F, I know it sounds like a lot, but they're all in the same ballpark. You know, they're all the same game.
Yeah, pretty much.
And I know you're an alternate on there, and I'm not trying to move Ellen or whatever, but even going to a few CIP committee meetings and then going on to budget, I was, I knew what I, I knew what I was looking at.
Sure.
When that came out, and they gave me the big book, and you say, oh my gosh, are we really going to go through all this? And we do. It follows that line, and I'm not saying it needs to be or whatever, but it's definitely helpful that if you could at least get to some meetings as an alternate, to see what's going on, if you're not going to be the main representative. They only meet in the summer, too.
Yeah.
They only meet for a couple months. Just, just so I know. Getting you all signed up here.
Alright, I'll work on A&amp;F, and Ellen will talk.
I think we did hear that we want Tim on all of the committees, right?
I heard someone say that.
I don't think my wife would appreciate that.
Wow.
Especially in the hall.
Yeah, she doesn't appreciate this right now.
It's just, it's a rookie thing, we do it.
I'd like to remind the board that you have a no hazing policy.
Alright, looks like we have a potential date for our April S U.
Potential date for our April 11th. Well, we wanted to put the date out there, and we'll also be putting it out to New Boston on Wednesday night. This is the time of the year where things get crazy, so we're trying to, you know, to lock, lock dates in.
What date was that?
Thursday. It's Thursday, April 11th. This is a note, I know I will not be able to attend that meeting.
7:00 P.M. where?
S U building.
6:00 P.M. where?
S U building.
Is that a Thursday conflict with you, Jared? So all Thursdays?
Until middle of May.
Yeah, we could look at.
Not saying change it for me, though you know that I have perfect attendance going there when I'm there. All the time.
What do you want to change? What, what date?
Wednesday, the 10th is open.
Same to me.
Not about me.
We like to have everybody there for S U.
It's like Thai food.
Are we switching to Wednesday?
We haven't put the date in front of New Boston yet, right? New Boston hasn't seen the 11th.
They usually meet on Wednesday.
But not that Wednesday. They meet the 3rd. And they meet the 17th.
Does anybody have a problem with Wednesday that they know of?
You have a problem with it?
Neither day appears to be equally bad, so we're okay.
Can you make it down?
Are you talking about the 10th?
Janelle says on.
Can you, as in, can you still make it down?
Probably. I mean, it's the Wednesday and Thursday before tax day, so it's one or the other.
Interesting.
Dan's a CPA, I can smell it.
I don't have the letters.
Tax preparer.
Yeah.
Do we just move the meeting, or?
We don't know yet. We're asking to see how you're doing. What is your Wednesday to 10th look like versus?
Doesn't matter to me. I just want to put it in here.
Put it to the 10th.
And we'll float that to New Boston on Wednesday night as well.
At 6?
At 6.
At 6.
The 10th at 6 at the S U.
That's it. Do you think the sheets are already in the packet?
Yep, you should all have the sheets already. We have a big, long list, because we canceled our last meeting. So let me go through, these are for notifications only. We have a leave of absence for the following: Kathy Whitney, Ava Lane, Emily D'Agostino, and Rianne Roy. Those are all different dates, if you just take a look at the sheet. We have coverage for some of those from Kristin Dudas, who will be a nurse at Bartlett. We have Tiffany Smith, who will be moving to full-time here at the high school, covering part of Mrs. Lane's leave. And we have Sarah Valley, who will be transferred between buildings to cover speech needs. For approvals, we have a number of retirements. One of these is listed as a retirement, but I believe we're looking at the possibility of a part-time position. I'm not sure, I hope I'm not saying anything publicly that I think is already widely known. And because I love Mr. Ward, I'm sure he wouldn't mind if I said that, but I believe that Mr. Ward will be continuing on in a part-time capacity and continuing to teach AP US history for us. And he's remarkable. So, but we have Susan Blanchett, Barb Moskew, Mike Gasper, Seal Peretta, and Bob Ward for retirements. This is a great group of teachers.
It is.
You know, it's always bittersweet. I'm always happy for teachers, but I'm always selfishly sad for us, and this list would be, would be no different. And, yeah, I'll stop.
Yeah, we'll just go one group at a time. Do we have a motion to approve the retirements?
I'll make a motion to approve the retirements with regret.
Regret.
But enjoy.
Seconded.
Motion by Jenny, second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing?
Here would be another example of a tremendous loss to us. Amanda Murchinson, the board may recall, she's a gifted English teacher. She's been on a year's leave of absence. She's been doing her doctoral dissertation. Congratulations for her for making that a priority of her life. And she will be not coming back, I'm sad to say, and she's looking for positions in higher education. She wants to work in teacher preparation training programs, which is where her doctoral dissertation research has been, and she's, she's a special lady, so I'm really sad to see her go.
Don't have a motion to accept that resignation?
Make a motion to accept Amanda Murchinson's resignation with regret as well.
Seconded.
Motion by Jenny, second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing?
We have a new counselor for next year here at the high school. We have a nomination for Eric Kosteki. And MC, could you give a little bit of an overview of Eric's background and what brings him to Goffstown High School, please?
Eric has fourteen years of experience. His last eight years have been in Conville. I talked about Conville earlier. He's got high school experience. His education, he has a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in counseling. He is experienced with Naviance. He was a data manager for the Conville School District, which is the whole college application process and all those pieces that we do here. He has been involved in their adult diploma program as the director. Yeah, I know. He's got, he's got some chops. Master Scheduling Committee, freshman transition teams. He's been, he's been involved in kind of more of that aspect, the administrative paperwork, pushing Naviance kind of piece, while also working with students. So he still had like 230 students. But he's really very interested in being part of a real collaborative team. And they're a nice, tight-knit group in that department. And they went through a lot of paperwork. They had probably, I want to say about sixteen applicants. They had probably, I want to say about 16 applications that they went through and looked at, and I believe they interviewed six people.
MC, I would also just share, this is a good example of us wanting to get the best that we can. Sometimes we end up hiring inexperienced teachers, but if we have the ability to hire someone with that kind of a background, that kind of a skill set, even though it's a more expensive teacher to bring in, we really felt that this was worth it.
It's interesting, one of his letters of recommendation, he and I talked about this, he was the guidance director from a different program that he had been in, he's in our Virginia, I believe it was. And the gentleman's observation was, now that he's been doing this for seven years, he's kind of finally figured out what the job is like and he's ready to go to the next step. And we talked about that a little bit. And he said, you know, it takes a while when you're working in a counseling program in a school because there are so many different aspects to it that you're involved with the kids. And he said, you really do, it takes five to seven years to start to hit your stride. So, I think he's bringing a nice skill set and we're very excited to have him.
All right, is there a motion to approve the nomination?
Make a motion to accept the nomination of Eric Kosteki for GHS guidance position.
By Jenny?
Seconded.
By Tim, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Standing? All right. Sports?
We've got a big, long list here. Would it be the board's preference if I just highlight the new ones, as the majority of these are returning coaches?
That makes sense.
Okay, so we have a few new folks. We have a new person in the role of JV girls lacrosse. This is Cassidy Lumiere, and she was selected by our varsity coach, Mrs. Boshia. We have a new JV softball coach, Rachel Boynton. And similarly, she was selected by Matt Fleming, who is our varsity coach. We have a new boys tennis coach. This is Stephen Devu, who Mr. Huff has found. You may recall that last year, Ryan Fitzpatrick was our tennis coach and he had resigned and didn't come back this year. Two more we have, and this is just a function of the size of the middle school track program, but we have Michael Leonard as a new track coach. And we have Lindsey Wigan as a new assistant in that program. And Lindsey is a teacher in the building as well. And all the rest of them are all repeat coaches.
Okay.
Just a quick question on these. Are these stipend positions?
Not all of them are stipend positions. Many of them are. Scott, we didn't identify which ones are. Some of these are paid by boosters clubs, but we typically identify the ones that are non-budget supported position. But the majority of these would be stipended positions.
Thank you. You don't have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the co-curricular sports nominations for the spring.
Motion by Jenny?
Seconded.
By Tim, all those in favor? Opposed, standing?
And then, these last ones, these are co-curricular and coaches not returning. I don't think we need to take an action on this, but these would just be notifications for you. Cindy Provost, girls lacrosse. Kristy Jenkins, JV softball. These are all the ones that we just, you saw the replacements. Ryan Coet, high school tennis. Sean Colligan, middle school track. And Michaela Darmody, middle school track as well. So, those folks won't be coming back to us.
I don't know if this is completely accurate, but I know Mr. Coet is still helping out with the tennis program a lot, so I don't know if that's accurate or what's completely up in that.
He may just be acting in a support role and this is actually the primary coach.
Yeah, I'm curious.
And sometimes when there's a new coach, you know, someone who has more experience might try to help get them acclimated, but thank you.
All right, anybody have any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
Oh, I actually have one.
Okay.
HB, you guys have heard of HB 1612? That was that technology, the thing where we have to go and we have to tell the whole world all of our secrets on technology.
How we're protecting all that stuff, too?
We're working on it. In fact, MC, in the technology group, they got a lot of things together. I was invited as part of the representative of this group to the tech, to the last meeting, which was February 20th. We have another one this coming Wednesday. I'll be attending there. They've done a lot of work, a lot of documents, a lot of detailed information. If you're not a tech reader, so to speak, and you need something to fall asleep with, this is what you would read. It's like doing tax prep. But there's a lot of it and we're still going through it. I'm going to let MC say anything more about it, but it's not ready to come to us yet, but we have to adopt it. It's going to be presented to us and it doesn't say, actually, the law doesn't say we have to adopt it, it just says it has to be presented to us.
Sorry, June 30th.
By June 30th. And what we're hoping, and I believe they're running something through the legislature right now, is the unintended consequence of putting all those secrets up on the web and getting everybody know how to get in, what we're using, that those pieces, and I think there's a good argument that we can, with current law, redact some of that stuff and then let the chips fall where they may, but at least they're not out there. But the things, you know, what are software? What kind of software programs are actually in all the schools? What do we have? 500, 600? There's tons and tons. And with that, I'll let you say anything further on the process, because it's been a lot of work.
Well, it has been, but it's been a team. And we talked to you about this at the end of last year. We started meeting in August. And I also, I want to thank Stephen for his support because we, as your chair, as we look as to where Dan, these documents need to go and we continue to define what a local education agency is and different pieces. Brian's involved in this as well, as well as the tech team and a couple of administrators. So, these documents are getting pretty heavy review in the committee. I think that we are, my phrase would be, go slow to go fast. And Brian and I have spoken and we don't always have to be the first one out of the gate. Sometimes it's good to let some other districts move ahead. We're hoping that we will get information that will support our thinking that the privacy pieces that Dan talks about, perhaps they don't really even belong as part of what we're looking at.
I just want to let the board know that we will not release information that will compromise our network. So, I don't care what people's interpretation of the House bill is. I don't care what people think they're going to have access to information. If there's anything that compromises our data security, we will not release it under any circumstances.
Excellent. And I don't think that's a prevailing interpretation, that part, that piece of it's a public.
Right. I've heard some say they believe it was part of it, you know, so as we talk tonight, there are different interpretations of different things. But I think that for true transparency, the better off we can talk about it and say, you know, there are different interpretations. We do believe there are some security laws in place now, pardon 91A, that will say the security, it doesn't happen, so which trumps which. I think we err on a side of keeping those, don't just pass the keys out to everybody. You know, the things that need to be locked, get locked, but the public stuff, absolutely do public.
I'm sorry to do this, but there were two things that we discussed in A&amp;F that there was.
Okay.
I know, it's late. The other thing, Dan, as part of this that we talked about, and Brian, you have asked Gary to start to develop a list of potential items, budget items, that we may need to deploy to meet some of the requirements, some of the security requirements, Dan?
Sure.
Like those racks for the servers and those pieces. So, you may be getting feedback from the subcommittee of some requirements that are needed to meet some of the elements within HB 1612.
Let me give you a 30-second example. So, servers, if you can, if you as a janitor can walk into a janitorial closet and say, oh, there's a bunch of servers, and you can actually touch it and feel it without being in a lock cage, that's a problem. That's what we have. So, we're talking about getting a cage in order to enclose it, so you need a key or you have to destroy whatever it is to try to get to the actual physical.
Wait, we're disturbed.
Brandon's at school tomorrow, guys. You have two items?
Yeah. So, the first one was a budget transfer approval for the SRO.
I really forgot about that.
And...
Brought it up, Jared.
Oh, we are. So, the A&amp;F committee met and recommended this budget transfer. That is for the SRO. It's a contracted service from the town of Goffstown. It is in the amount of $78,695.16, and it's going to come from the teachers line, which has sufficient money in it in this current year's budget to do the transfer. So, I would need a motion and a second approval to proceed with that transfer so I can pay the bill.
So, moved.
Motion by Jared?
Seconded.
Seconded by Janelle.
This is kind of pursuant to a new policy that we adopted a number of meetings ago.
Correct. All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed, standing?
And two? And the last one was, I've had a discussion with our auditing firm about student accounts, student activity accounts. And they, two to three years ago, they were brought back inside based upon recommendation from the prior auditor. It is a very cumbersome process and one that does not work well, especially here at the high school, in terms of giving timely reimbursements to teachers and students. It could take two to three weeks sometimes because we have to go through a purchase order process and it's very, a lot of effort goes into it. And speaking with Cheryl Pradat at Plodzik, she sent me an email back saying there are no problems. The vast majority of school districts operate that way. One layer of oversight that we are going to have is that either Laura or Eric will be doing monthly reviews of the books at the schools once they go back. We're also planning on giving each school QuickBooks so they can effectively process these transactions. But since the board, I think, authorized them going into the business office, the board needs to authorize them going back.
Scott, can we just be sure that that recommendation had come from the prior auditor?
Correct.
But it was based on a GASB standard, the government and accounting standard, I think it was 84?
It doesn't apply.
Okay, so there's no concern.
It does not need to be in the S U.
Okay, so the oversight continues, but the actual housing of the account is fine to return to the high school?
Correct.
I think this is, it's better for the school, it's better for the business office. We don't want, you know, the high school sometimes doesn't have the luxury of, you know, weeks' notice before they need a check for something. This would give them that flexibility back, but retain the oversight. Let me ask Scott a seated question. How many other school districts in the state of New Hampshire actually have brought it into the S U versus reading the GASB rule and leaving it at the schools?
I don't know. I will tell you that in my conversations with Cheryl, she says that almost all of the districts that she works with, it is done in the schools. So, it is the anomaly, we are the exception in that respect. And again, I don't know why the prior auditor, I wasn't here, I don't know what the rationale was, but according to Cheryl, it's almost every district that she works with, it's done at the school level.
So, if we have a motion to allow it to go back to school, it would be based on the business office maintaining a level of oversight and monthly review
Correct.
of the QuickBooks software to make sure everything, because I think one of the things we had talked about is that they didn't have a good audit trail of what was happening with the money. So, with that in mind, I'd like to make that motion.
Seconded. Motion by Dan, seconded by Tim. All those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to table till we have this written down and verification that a policy is in place at the school level for the review of this material.
Seconded.
So, in terms of a policy...
Board, board policy?
I'd like to understand if we have, yes, I'd like to understand if we have a policy that, not to say anybody would, but if POs are being cut, even though they're being reviewed at the S U level, that we have some type of oversight at the school level to make sure that that is a valid transaction that's occurring. And nothing nefarious, I believe is the term that Dan uses a lot, could be happening at the school level.
Good word. What was not a good word?
Policy with regs would be very helpful to put the parameters on that I think they're looking for.
I just, I'm not aware of any policy that's in place at the school level. And I have nothing written down that I can look at to actually give this an affirmative vote.
Yeah, there is a policy with respect to principals having discretion in terms of petty cash funds and things like that. It is ultimately their responsibility to administer those. Essentially, though, what we're talking about, though, is that, the motion is that the business office is going to review reconciliations. The vested interest that we have in it is that these get audited. So, when we talk about a policy, if something is happening, it's going to get audited by Plodzik. They will look at our student accounts. The prior auditor looked at the student accounts, so...
But that would be after the check is cut and potentially cashed, that that review would actually occur.
That's true.
Yeah.
So, I'm not totally sure I understand what it is you're, what is you're looking to have created, particularly when you say policy, I have in mind if you go to the policy review committee and something's going to have to be created and certainly that's going...
I'm not sure if any policy's in place right now. I'm just fearful that we're putting something that's at a central S U level from an oversight and affirmative. Basically, it has to be approved at the S U level. We have controls and rigor in place.
Only for one school, though, Jared. So, it's only the high school that the oversight is done at the S U. Mountain View, Maple Ave, all the other schools retain those accounts in their offices. It's only the high school that we actually moved under the umbrella of the S U.
And you have to have a receipt to get your check.
Right.
And what you're getting for is something for the school. Like, if you ask the principal, may I have a check for the band that's coming? Not nefarious stuff happens because when you ask for something, the principal knows exactly what this club is, what this club does, and what that money is coming from. And right now, people are having money on their credit cards for weeks, on their own personal credit cards, which is not fair for them to be paying interest, which the school district should be paying that interest. And people should not have money, personal money tied up on their own personal credit cards, which is the school's business. So, if it went back to the old system, their money would come back to them in a faster rate and the oldness would not be on them all the time. Am I not right?
You are correct. So, there's a couple of issues here. It's, we have a lot of, we have two or three schools that are, it's already being done without that. But I don't mind, you know, if you want to charge me with creating guidelines for principals, that's my intent anyway. I'm not turning this over to the schools and giving them no direction. So, they're going to be getting guidelines with regard to how do you deal with cash? How do you, you know, what are you supposed to do in terms of when someone asks for expense reimbursement? We're developing a form, so, an expense reimbursement form. So, all those things are going to happen. I have no, absolutely no objection to preparing guidelines and giving you those guidelines to give you that peace of mind to know that we've put checks and balances in all along. The notion of having a set policy and a regulation, in my mind, is a bit overkill for those, and again, no disrespect. We entrust our principal with the lives of 1,200 kids and several hundred, and faculty. We will have those checks and balances in terms of the guidelines and the processes and the oversight by the S U office. I feel, I wouldn't do this if I didn't put those things in place. I wouldn't just turn the keys over to the car without knowing that they know how to drive it.
And this is nothing new. This is going back to the way it was before.
It's exactly the way that it was before, but I think you're right.
It's going to be better than it was before.
I think you're right, though, in the sense that...
Before, there was no oversight.
I want the comfort of the oversight and giving them the training and the processes in which I want them to adhere to. And I will give you those before we turn it over. I will guarantee you that, because I will not do it until that is in place. Because I hear where you're coming from. Because I hear where you're coming from, and that's something that, you know, I've already chatted with, you know, both Kim and Frank here, as well as folks in my office, that we are going to have set processes and standards, you know, for these. But the issue right now is just, it's the time. We are not, you know, and I think you hit it on the head, it's taking two and three weeks to get kids and faculty their money. And that's not a good system.
Fair. It's not fair.
Ellen?
If this is already being done at the other schools, granted, the high school's a great deal more volume, aren't these procedures already in place? And if they're not, why aren't they?
The, in terms of, we do look at the books. So Laura just went over to Mountain View and looked at their books. So there are processes in place. This is, the high school is by far, we're talking probably 90% of the transactions are coming out of this high school.
I agree.
You know, you're talking about 45, 50 clubs. This is the primary driver. The others are much, much smaller.
But they still should be having procedures in place that are in writing that would still follow through with the high school, same thing.
And they will. I mean, all, my thought process here is that when they get, all get returned to, you know, to the schools, that there will be those, you know, those guidelines in place.
And I just have to make sure that we all recognize there are no public funds here. These are all independent student funds that had been expended, and when the auditor looked at it, one of his things, he never came back and said, you know, funds are being expended inappropriately. He just said that because of his review of the GASB, we should bring them in, and that's the only reason why we did that. And if he hadn't done that, we wouldn't even be talking about it today. I agree, we should probably have some oversight, but I think the motion that generally says the SAU shall still maintain oversight for these funds was probably enough to get it going, without having to wait for another meeting before they can start. That was my argument.
The one thing that I see, if I may
Sorry.
The one thing that I'm looking at is that the way that the motion was made, this was supposed to take effect, no date given, so I assume it was immediate after the votes taken place.
Yes.
There's no policies that have been documented, drafted, or shared or communicated.
Agreed.
And that's what I'd like to see.
Which means we have to wait so that the burn continues to burn. And, you know, our policymaking means first read would be, and at least after policy review, we wouldn't be doing anything for another two, three months.
And I say policy, but I like what Scott said for guidelines. So if he's putting out guidelines, I would retract the ask of the policy
Okay.
being done. But again, I just don't see any guidelines presented, and we would be implementing this as of the vote.
Yeah, we don't I should clarify, in A&amp;F, we talked about it would be
That may be true, but that's not how it was presented as a vote.
I understand that, that's why I want to, you know, clarify that. Well, technically, usually it's the board who makes the
Yep, I know.
But we talked about that it would be implemented prior to they started the next academic year, which would be, you know, no later, you know, no earlier than September 1st. So this way it gives us the
No, no. Well, it was
Well, it was earlier. It was by September 1st.
By September 1st, right.
So this shouldn't be a problem.
So if you, if you want to wait a couple of weeks and jot down some guidelines, is that something that is feasible for you?
Yeah.
I mean Doesn't Cheryl Pratt from Plodzik and Sanderson already have
She has a handbook.
She has a handbook that she's created
Exactly.
that's specifically tailored
It does.
towards these student activity accounts.
Right, and Lynn already has the handbook. She's reviewed it, and in that handbook, the recommendations are, have a standard expense reimbursement form. It talks about what you're supposed to do when you get cash, how quickly deposit should be made. So it really does speak to all of those processes, and Plodzik
So if we use, if we use Cheryl's handbook and not a policy, then I think that that's pretty robust.
Very comprehensive.
Yeah.
She gives examples of all these forms that you should use, and I can get you a copy of that.
But so you're saying that the account returning to the high school would go with those kinds of expectations?
Correct.
Is that along the lines of what you're looking for, you think, Jared?
Yeah, yes, it is. And the point that I'm trying to make is if we are amending the actual vote to say that these would be as of beginning of August, before next school year, I would remove my table ask, just so that we could see what those guidelines are.
I can get you a copy.
I just, I want to see them. I want to make sure that we have a healthy and robust debate if needed, because I'm getting, I get concerned, not to say that any of our members would, of our staff, but if there is a principal that is submitting a expense report, who's approving it? The principal?
No.
Where's it written down? Where can I see that? I think that's very important, to have that transparency that we talk about.
And it's something we wanted to do, so let's just codify it, let's put it in writing.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, it's not going to be all that challenging to say that we're going to file the guidelines in this handbook, which is probably about 100 pages long, so.
I'm fine with that. I just would like to have it written down and see it.
Okay.
Have you withdrawn your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second, if that's what you're doing.
I'm not even sure what the motion is.
So my motion
Your motion was to table.
My motion was to table.
My motion was to make it happen. I'm willing to retract my motion if the second gets motion, so that you can go ahead and make what you would like for a motion. What do you think?
I'm good with that, Dan.
Huh?
I'm good with that. I don't know who your second was.
I don't remember who it was. I made the motion.
Of Dan's motion.
Oh, that was me. It was I too agree. What you just said.
You withdraw your second.
Whatever makes it happen.
So I withdraw the motion. So the floor is now open.
I'll do my best. So I would make a motion that we move forward with Scott's recommendation under the guise and premise that we will have guidelines that are fully approved by the board before the next academic year.
Thank you.
Did you have that, Ms.?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Jared. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?